Thank you, Clerk Snare. Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting to order at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, September 9. Attendance? We have everyone here. Councilor Yanish is zooming in, Clerk Snare. So, folks, we don't have our clickers to vote. We're not set up with that. So, any motions that need voting, we will do by hands this evening. No additions, no deletions. So, it'll be approved as circulated? Is there any declarations of conflict of interest this evening? Seeing none, we'll move right along to announcements. So, welcome back, Council. Hope everyone had a great August and taken some of our events, the Avon River Days and our farmers markets. Just want to remind folks here and who are watching of the mandatory water advisory. We have seen some rainfall, but definitely not enough to get us going in the right direction. So, I just have a couple of things, people I want to recognize. Over the summer, we had a couple athletes take part in the canned games. So, I want to give a shout out to Eileen Benoit, who received a silver medal in the 500 meters. She's from Sweet's Corner, and she was less than a second from first. So, that's a pretty big accomplishment for her. As well, we had Chloe Dunbar, a gold in the Para Amelatory 100 meters, and her and Zach James were the ceremony flag bearers. So, good for them and great representation for us. Reminder, the Hans County Exhibition starts this weekend, and Council, it looks like our calendar is going to be a full one for the next few weeks. So, I guess we settle in and get on good, get going. Are there any other announcements this evening? Counselor Bonnie Smith?
Just another quick one. Garlic Fest is this weekend. 2025 Garlic Fest is this Saturday, September 13th, downtown Windsor, from 11 till 5. Lots of great events planned, vendors, music, all around a great time.
Perfect. Seeing no other lights, we're going to move right along. Looking for approval of previous minute, minute, meeting minutes? A, 2025-0616 Special Committee of the Whole Minutes for Budget, and B, 2025-0708 Committee of the Whole Minutes. Was there anything anyone picked up on those? If not, they will be approved as circulated? Seeing none? Perfect. So, we have two presentations tonight. So, the first one is Nova Scotia Brumball Presentation, Expression Appreciation, and I'm going to call Daryl Lidle and his guest up, and he can introduce them and take it away.
Yes. Good evening, everyone, Mayor, Council, and staff. It is my pleasure to join you all here this evening on behalf of the 2025 Canadian Senior Brumball Championship Committee to deliver a brief overview of a hugely successful event. First of all, I'd like to introduce a couple of my committee members. Karen Rose, or Karen Rose, Karen Wallace, sorry, Karen. Karen was instrumental in handling all the banquet and all those festivities, among with everything else that came up, I guess, during the week. And Adam Sexton, Adam is the president of West Hans Brumball, and also he was the coach of the men's and women's teams that participated and very active in the organizing of it as well. And for those of you who might not know who I am, I'm Daryl Lidle, and I was the event chairperson. So, just to give you a little bit of insight into what happened. It was a five-day event held at the West Hans Sports Complex and the GFL Recreation Centre. It consisted of 32 teams from across Canada, and they played 111 games over five days for the right to win four Canadian championship titles. There were a total of 768 players, coaches, officials, team staff, the Canadian Brumball Federation Executive, and the provincial board members. To give you an idea of accommodations, the accommodation sites that we had to use were the Super 8, it was the event headquarters, the Clockmaker Inn, the Falls Lake Facility, Old Orchard Inn, Slumber Inn, Greensboro Inn, Holiday Inn Express, both in Halifax and Dartmouth. But there were several teams that actually tapped into our Airbnbs locally, and one team from Ontario actually stayed, the whole team stayed at the Mount's House in Avondale. So, a lot of hotel accommodations were scheduled for that week. The closing banquet, it was held at Avonview High School. For the first time, a banquet was held there that you could have liquor sales and a banquet and awards, and we had 656 attend the banquet at Avonview on the Saturday night to close out the event. The organizing committee consisted of 18 committee heads and chairs, and we had 95-plus outstanding volunteers. The community of West Hans put on a show, and the comments we have received both during and since should make us all proud of who we are and what we can accomplish. We have two special presentations of thanks to Council, and in particular, your staff for the support and cooperation you provided us throughout the process. The following staff we would like to single out, as they are without question the best of the best. Kathy Keo, Kathy Johnson, Vanessa Roberts, and Kevin Bennett and his staff at the Hans West Sports Complex are just incredible, just incredible. So, we do have two presentations to make, and I would ask Karen, Karen's going to make the first one, and then I'll make the second one, and we have them hidden over here in the corner.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share a very short story with all of you tonight to put our presentation into context. It also dates me by quite to put our presentation into context. It also dates me by quite a bit. Fifty years ago, fifty, can't even get my head around that. I was 12 years old. I went to the Brooklyn Rink with my mom, and this would be the old Brooklyn Rink. My mom wanted to play hot women's hockey, and when she arrived there that night, former Windsor Recreation Director named Judy Cronin, I don't know if anybody remembers Judy, encouraged my mom to try broomball because they were going on the ice at that particular time. She said, "Try broomball, it's a lot better than hockey." And by the next week, they'd invited me to join as being the youngest one on the team, but they needed bodies at the time. After that, I played for 22 years and loved the sport, thought I was done with it until this year. But one of my teammates at that time happened to be Jeannie Jones, and Jeannie lived here in West Hans. She lived in Summerville, and I've not seen Jeannie for probably 35 years, but through friends, we've stayed in touch and stayed with updates with each other. We fast forward 50 years to last April, and we're hosting the 2025 Broomball Nationals in West Hans. And I receive a message from a friend that Jeannie Jones has sent a picture to Windsor and wanted me to look after it to make sure something special happened with that picture. The picture was painted by her brother. Her brother was Harold Matthew Jones, better known as Hal Jones, and during Hal's art career, he often had a booth set up at the Seaport Farm Festival in Halifax. And during his career, he painted many collections. He painted collections on the Paralympic Games, the Blue Nose Marathon, triathlons, Canada Games, the Olympics, Special Olympics, and the buskers. And in 2011, Hal had a special art show at the Nova Scotia Archives titled "A White Man's Journey Through Native Land," and he had spent 30 years creating and learning about Indigenous art and culture, and put that into his artwork and had a room full of his artwork that he had learned from studying Indigenous people's way of doing art. The painting that we are going to present to you tonight was completed, I believe, in 2016 from my research of going back through his paintings. Jeannie felt it was fitting for the painting to be hung in West Hans after us having a very successful Broomball Nationals, and she was convinced before the Nationals were finished that we would have it. But it wasn't until after the Nationals were complete that we discovered that Hal had passed away at the age of 72, four days before our event started. And it was their family together trying to figure out what to do with all of his artwork that they, that he made, she made the decision that the broomball painting should come this way, because it was, it was special for me and it was special for our community. Hal's family had been told of our special plan that we had for his painting, and they are thrilled that it is going to be here. One note about Hal's paintings, from my research of any paintings he has done, any paintings that have people in them, he has all kinds of different artwork, but anyone's with activities or sports, the humans wear a hat that looks similar to a gestures hat, and it's very recognizable trademark of Hal's, and you'll see it in this painting, but anyone's, if it's a golfing painting, a swimming painting, a biking painting, they have a gesture hat on, and it was his trademark so that people would recognize it as Hal Jones' work. So, our gift to the municipality of West Hans comes with deep appreciation for all your support in so many different ways, and it will be recognized with Hal Jones' broomball painting, and together with West Hans, we hosted a great national. So, thank you very much for that.
It has his bio on the back for anybody that's interested.
They should get it in front of here. Abe, can I just interject? Bonnie, just come up under here, and you'll have a better background. Just a suggestion. Better than the coffee machine.
Thank you, Karen. So, we just have one more presentation we'd like to make to the, to the West Hans, and basically, it's very short. I don't have a long story to say, but what we've done is we framed the gold, silver, and bronze medals that were designed here locally, and we put them in a frame to be hung somewheres in the municipality, and it reads, "Presented to the municipality of West Hans in appreciation of your outstanding support and commitment to the 2025 Canadian Senior Broomball Championships. From the 2025 Organizing Committee and West Hans Broomball."
Get them in order, Kathy. No, you go right ahead. No, you go right, you go right ahead. Thank you very much, Daryl. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, we're gonna move along to our second presentation, and it's West Hans Regional Municipality's Active Transportation Plan. And Kathy Johnson, I'll give the floor to you.
It's hard to follow that up. That was a great event in West Hans, but thanks for having me, folks. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. In 2015, the former municipality of West Hans, Town of Windsor and Town of Hansport, adopted an active transportation plan for the Avon region. This plan, which was prepared by Upland, was an eight-year plan that launched the active Avon brand and promoted West Hans transfer, or sorry, active transportation throughout our region. In August 2024, Upland was again the successful bidder to create our next seven-year active transportation and trail strategy. I'm excited to introduce Bruce Mann's partner, planner, and urban designer with Upland Studios to present this plan that will move us into the next phase of becoming an active transportation-friendly region and allow community members and tourists alike to move about with safety and ease. So, Bruce, I'll throw it up to you.
Thank you, Kathy. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes, wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Mayor and Council. Kathy said, "My name is Bruce Mann. I'm a planner and partner here with Upland, planning and design at Halifax, and we've been working with Kathy Johnson and Kathy Keough, as well as several other staff at West Hans Regional Municipality over the past year or so, on updating the active transportation and trail strategy for the West Hans Regional Municipality. On behalf of our entire team, I'm really excited to share the highlights of this project with you tonight." Just gonna share my screen quickly. We all see the screen?
Yes, we can.
Didn't hear anything. Yes, we can. Perfect. Thank you very much. Wonderful. So, here's a brief outline of what we'll cover tonight. I'm hoping it'll take about 10 minutes, maybe a little bit more, and it's really more of a highlights reel package, but we'll also have five minutes afterwards if anyone has any more detailed questions and wants to take a deeper dive into some more particular aspects of the plan as well. So, we'll start with a bit about the project. This new active transportation and trail strategy provides a holistic suite of recommendations aimed at improving human-powered transportation options. So, these would be things like walking, rolling, cycling, rollerblading, skateboarding, and other types of human-powered transportation, and it could also even include some lightly assistive forms of transportation like e-bikes and electric wheelchairs as well. More specifically, this project really seeks to improve how residents and visitors can move throughout the municipality, creating a more sustainable community where active transportation is not only safe and accessible, but also really enjoyable as well. So, we've just finished this project, and the result was a 128-page comprehensive planning document, which includes an existing conditions section, a section on community input and vision, shop brand design guidelines, as well as recommendations on the AT and trail network improvements, as well as education programming and policy improvements, and then, of course, an implementation section on facing costing and funding opportunities as well. But before we get into the project outcomes, I just want to briefly go over the community consultation process. So, we began this project with a multifaceted community consultation phase that included a variety of engagement tactics to generate as wide-ranging feedback as possible. So, this included an online public survey with 131 responses, stakeholder engagement interviews with 13 different community organizations, online presentation and recording for in-person public information centers throughout the municipality, an online interactive map tool with 104 contributions, as well as two sidewalk needs assessment walk and roll sessions that had 17 people come out. So, the feedback we received during these events was summarized into a What We Heard report, and then also synthesized into a concise vision statement instead of guiding principles, which would help guide the direction of the plan. So, the project vision statement envisions that West Hans, as a community where active transportation is an easy, safe, and accessible choice for everyone, with a well-connected network that supports all ages and abilities, enhances everyday experiences, and removes barriers to mobility. We also drafted a series of six guiding principles that were developed to support this overarching vision, so these would help form the recommendations. So, recommendations in this plan will aim to prioritize safety and eliminate barriers. They'll support diverse active transportation options. They'll ensure access for all ages and abilities, improve connectivity and infrastructure, enhance amenities and user experience, finally expand programming and resources. Okay, so now we'll get into some of the outcomes of the AT plan, beginning with a quick overview of the Design Guidelines chapter. And this chapter really provides a detailed overview of the different facility types, amenity options, and other design solutions that we're gonna be proposing throughout the plan. So, it's really the palette that the municipality has to work with when implementing some of these improvements. So, here are a few examples of some proposed route types or facility types that we call it. We're gonna start with some on-road facility types. So, these are routes that are included within an existing road right-of-way, so on the street. These would include things like shared routes or local street bikeways. So, these are essentially facilities that would be featured on lower traffic volume, roads with lower traffic volume, where it's safe enough for active transportation users to use the road with motorists, sometimes with the aid of signage or traffic calming measures that you see in this photo here. Paved shoulders are another type of facility that feature widened shoulders on the side of traffic lanes, and these would be featured on busier roads such as secondary highways, where higher speeds are present and traffic volumes would exceed about 1,000 vehicles per day. So, they're just busier streets that need a little bit more space. Sidewalks are another type of on-road route that we're all familiar with, I'm sure, but are more focused on just pedestrian use and not necessarily cyclists. But more and more, we're seeing municipalities in Nova Scotia utilize separated multi-use pathways, which are essentially wider sidewalks, usually about three meters wide or more, and these can accommodate all modes of active transportation, not just pedestrians. Something like this is similar to what currently exists on the south side of Wentworth Road in West Hans right now. The plan also includes some off-road AT route types, which are routes that are not in the right-of-way. So, for example, these would include shared use pathways, which are about three-meter-wide multi-use pathways that would allow active transportations to use them, as well as motorized users such as OHD users and snowmobiles, as well as multi-use pathways, which are essentially the same thing, but wouldn't permit motorized users. And then finally, there's also recreational trails, which are roughly two-meter-wide pedestrian routes, as well as hiking trails, which are more primitive, basic footpaths that you might see in more wilderness-type environments. This section also included some guidance on active transportation amenities that can help improve the comfort, convenience, and accessibility for AT users, which is an important consideration. So, these would include things like bicycle parking, sheltered bike parking, benches and seating, bike repair stations, water stations, pedestrian-oriented street lighting, waste and petway stations, as well as e-bike charging stations, and refinding signage. And then finally, that section includes also a handful of intersection improvements that can help improve safety at intersections. So, these are things like curb extensions, accessible signals and indicators, leading pedestrian intervals, which allow pedestrians to get into a crosswalk ahead of traffic when the light turns green, roundabout crossings, and crossrides. So, with these different route types in mind, I'm now gonna go over the highlights of the proposed AT network. So, we'll start with the regional routes, which make up the spine of the West Hans AT network. So, these are gonna be larger or uninterrupted routes that might also link into neighboring municipalities. And these would consist of a strong combination of on-road routes such as trunk 14, Route 1, as well as Highway 215, as well as an off-road network utilizing that former rail corridor. So, these regional, this regional network would then be augmented by a series of local networks in some of the communities throughout West Hans. So, in West Hans, or sorry, in Hansport, regional connections on trunk 1 and the rail trail are going to be augmented by a series of local street bikeways throughout, throughout the town, such as School Street and Willow Street, as well as a new proposed multi-use path network in the Hansport Memorial Community Centre, and a formalized multi-use pathway connecting the Fundy Centennial Park. In Falmouth, with regional connections on trunk 1 and the rail trail are gonna be augmented and supported by a new local street bikeway on Falmouth Dyke Road, as well as a proposed separated multi-use pathway along Falmouth Back Road. And finally, a small loop of separated multi-use pathways is proposed around the Falmouth District School, which is right here, and that also connects into the Windsor Elms Village Community Centre over here. In Windsor, regional connections are supplemented by extending the separated multi-use pathway on Wentworth Road into O'Brien Street and King Street, as well as a new multi-use pathway that's proposed on the west side of Windsor, connecting through King's Edge Health School, new multi-use pathway along the Windsor waterfront, as well as local street bikeways throughout the downtown and Avon View area. In Three Mile Plains, regional connections on trunk 1 are augmented by a new paved shoulder loop on Three Mile Cross, or Three Mile Plains Cross Road and Windsor Back Road, as well as a local street bikeway that continues towards trunk 14, and a local street bikeway on Panook Road that goes down to Panook Road Park. And finally, in Brooklyn, regional connections on trunk 14 and Highway 215 supplemented by a new proposed separated multi-use pathway that links the rail trail to the school, linking the arena and the gas station as well. So, the plan also includes extensive recommendations beyond these physical network improvements, and these really focus on impactful events and programs that help distribute information, break down barriers, shift habits, really help to trigger a culture shift towards encouraging more people to use active transportation. So, these community programs and events are recommended, such as bike-friendly business programs, facilitating walking, rolling, and cycling groups, as well as developing an active routes-to-school program and more. It includes marketing and awareness initiatives such as print resources and maps, as well as online interactive active transportation maps to help people find trails and active transportation routes in their community. Finally, planning and policy adjustments are posed that aim to support active transportation through the municipal planning strategy, land use by law and subdivision by law. So last but not least, the plan also includes a detailed implementation section. So there's a lot of recommendations in here, and of course, these can't happen overnight. It's going to take seven to ten years for the municipality or more to implement a lot of these. So we've broken, broken down all the recommendations into near-term projects, which is years one to three, medium-term projects, which is years four through six, as well as long-term projects, years seven to ten. And then we also included a category called opportunity-based projects. So these would be projects that can occur on an opportunity-based approach when other road projects are being undertaken by other external agencies like Public Works. So an example of this would be adding paved shoulders to a secondary highway when it gets repaved as part of their regular paving, paving schedule. The implementation section also includes high-level cost estimates for all the capital projects proposed, as well as costs for future engineering studies and design work that needs to occur, as well as an opportunity of all the various federal and provincial funding sources that align with this project and can be really leveraged by the municipality to get to get more bang for your buck. Okay, so hopefully that was a helpful overview of this plan. It's always challenging to cram one hundred and twenty-eight pages into a ten-minute presentation, but that hopefully gives you a good sense of the project. But if you have any more questions or comments, I know myself or Kathy, one of the Kathys would be happy to help answer any of those. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce, for the presentation. It was very informative. So I will open it up to council if there's any questions for Bruce at this time. Councillor Ivy?
So I'm not sure if this is where the question comes in or not, so I'll just throw it out and we'll see. But for starters, a really exciting and interesting plan to be able to look at. And, you know, I don't know about anybody else, but you're sitting here with the great routes that have already been identified, and you start identifying more that could be in there. So it creates that initiative to want to see other areas that we sometimes know that just naturally have been there forever, like the folks that walk from Three Mile Plains into Windsor, that's a long-established walking route that's been done for years and decades. So all kinds of things like that. But the question that it comes to is we haven't talked about cost here at all. And I know that, and so I don't know how, how was this all working through in that regard? The motion doesn't talk to that. And again, I'm not sure that we're at that yet, but but what kind of cost are we looking at here for this, if we can?
Kathy, do you?
Bruce, we might be able to take time on this. At this point, there is no commitment to cost. It's a plan that will kind of shape the work and the projects that we take to kind of carry things through over the next while, as we kind of break this down into easier chunks and kind of move ourselves towards that finished product in seven years. And Bruce, feel free, there is a whole, there is an entire section with kind of each of those projects broken down into tangible pieces as well.
Yeah, exactly. There. Sorry, there is, there is a section that breaks down all the near-term, medium-term, long-term and opportunity-based projects, as well as the cost for some of the studies that should occur. Of course, these things are moving targets as well, and well, you'll be adapting as you, as you go and as opportunities present themselves as well. But that does have a detailed breakdown with some contingency in there as well.
Thank you. And so can I assume from that that there's, I guess, flexibility in the, I guess, in the order of things and how, how you work your way through that, that you'll, you'll discover some things that may be easier to do and other ones that might be more difficult. And so you can shift and adjust like pieces of a puzzle on a, on a board. Am I accurate in assuming that?
Exactly.
Any other questions? Mayor Zabian?
Thank you, Chair. Bruce, Recreation, Cathy Cathy. It's very similar to the previous plan that we had for AT, the AT strategy, and it's a multi, multi, multi-year plan that certain elements will come in every year, some years probably not so much, based on budget and based on direction of the community. This again is, is a very long-term plan that may incorporate things. So as we have a a public street come up for renewal, some of these aspects may be incorporated into that or et cetera, et cetera. A lot of it's probably blue route provincially as well with bike lanes and, you know, so it's kind of stretches over a couple of different things. I think it's great. I remember, I remember, well, my first was brought in, the AT strategy. It was quite exciting and you can see when the signage went up, all the green signs for first and it ties it all in. And it's just, it's just a good plan going forward.
Just
Thank you.
Through you, just wanted to make a quick comment. And one of the requirements, so a lot of the work that you'll see, or a significant amount of work that you'll see within the document is on provincial roads. And as you know, you know, those are provincially maintained. So, but this is a requirement, unless that's changed, this is a requirement for us to have a plan in order for those things to even be considered for AT. You know, we have to have a plan in place. So this supports future provincial initiatives as well, which is why you'll see a lot of the information on the provincial roads included in this. So their plan, yeah, will be hopefully impacted by the work that we've done as well. So.
Perfect. And we've seen that now with the provincial road of the Highway one with the paved shoulder from Three Mile Plains out to St. Croix. So that's beautiful. Perfect. Well, thank you very much, everyone. I don't see any other lights. So thank you and thank you, Bruce, for the presentation. So council, there is a motion there. Mayor Zabian?
I'll make that chair. Committee of the whole recommends that council approve and adopt the West Hans Regional Municipality Act of Transportation and Trail Strategy 2025 as presented.
Motion made by Mayor Zabian. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Councillor Larry Pinch. So the motion is Committee of the whole recommends that council approve and adopt the West Hans Regional Municipality Act of Transportation and Trail Strategy 2025 as presented. So all those in favor? Motion passed. Perfect. Thanks very much.
Take you off.
Thanks, Bruce. Have a good night.
You too.
So moving right along, unfinished business and postponed motions. We have the Transportation Feasibility Study, RFP award WHRMPL twenty-five dash oh one recommendation report, Coordinator Ogilvy.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Before you tonight, I have a recommendation report, including a recommendation for Committee of the whole to recommend a council approve awarding this RFP to WSP Canada for completing a zero emissions transportation feasibility study. Some of the highlights through the report, the scoring and the price of each proposal is listed in the report. And because the scores were so similar in scoring these proponents, staff spent a significant amount of time reviewing them. Some of the major components that separated these proposals from the proponents include the actual amount of time that they were proposing to dedicate to the study, ranging from five hundred sixty-eight to six hundred seventeen hours. Also, public engagement was a major component of this and was judged based on that. And the proponent WSP proposed the most number of public engagement and stakeholder sessions. And the format was considered as well, whether they were proposing virtual or in-person public engagement and stakeholder sessions. So those are parts of the major components that really informed staff's review of the proposals, as well as the two major pieces of this study, which are a accessible transportation options, but also a focus on the net zero emissions portion of it as well. So if there are any questions from council, I'd be happy to take some.
Thanks, John. Is there any questions on the report at this time before we get to Councillor Larry Pinch?
Thank you through you, Chair. Just in the discussion, it had suggested that this was like a requirement for us to be able to obtain grant funding to potentially provide a transportation model of council's decision in the future. Is that one of the main focuses of doing? It's just, it's just a large cost for a study. So.
So the feasibility study, first and foremost, it has to be net zero emissions because that's a condition of our grant that we receive to do the study. And then also, this study will help us apply in a major way for capital funding. If council wishes in the future to go forward with some sort of transportation system, a lot of capital funding really wants a background document like a feasibility study completed to inform what kind of infrastructure you're looking at and what kind of any sort of transportation, whether it's a bus, a van, any sort of those things. They really want those background documents to inform that kind of application for funding, whether it be from the federal or provincial governments.
Councillor Ivy?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Through you too, Plenar Ogilvy. So, John, thanks very much for this. I am kind of struck by the scores, frankly. So like on the cost basis alone, and not that it's just about cost, but typically when we're going out for a tender like this and you have what I'll call to be a fairly significant twenty to twenty-five percent cost differential, top to the bottom. Are we okay in being able to look at accepting a higher tender bid that is that is distinctly different, at least on a percentage basis like that?
Through you, Chair. Staff spent over four hours reviewing the proposals together over the course of a week in separate meetings, as well as our individual time spent reviewing them to score them. We're fairly confident in our recommendation to committee as a whole in the sense that staff really feel that this proposal merits the best value for money, especially in terms of public engagement. That was a significant difference between the proposals was the number of sessions offered, as well as the format of them. So those sorts of things really inform to in staff's view whether or not this is going to be a very strong study that will help inform council's decision in the future regarding any transportation systems.
Okay, thanks very much for that. And just to follow up, so, because I really appreciate the attention on the public engagement and more for me is always better and best. Can you give us a scale as to what kind of a difference we saw in that WSP compared to what was offered by the lower bid?
So WSP offered more than double the amount of public engagement and stakeholder sessions than the other two proposals, as well as offering them in all in-person format versus virtual were offered in some of the, in the other two proposals.
Okay. And so when we say double, am I able to dig a little bit deeper in that? Can you tell us what the number is? Are we?
So WSP proposed five public information sessions with the public and five sessions with major stakeholders such as Nova Scotia Health, the West Hans Uniak Community Health Board, those sorts of other major stakeholders throughout the region.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor Zabian?
Yeah, it was just pretty much along the same lines for the quality. I guess I shouldn't say quality, but the the difference of the applications, because it's unusual to see vice versa on technical as opposed to pricing, usually pricing trumps everything. But in this situation, it was a little bit different. But it also rings a bell. Some, some were around this table when we approved the sports complex. It was very similar. We had two bids that were almost identical and council ended up going with the slightly higher bid based on the technical build of the complex as, you know, similar to the technical aspects of the study being done in regards to public engagement and in person as opposed to online, more formal, more, more detailed that way. So so definitely understand the recommendation.
Any other questions, council to John? Seeing none. Thank you, John, for the presentation. And council, there is two recommendations there if anyone wished to make them. Councillor Bonnie Smith?
Hi. The Committee of the whole recommend that council approve awarding RFP number WHRMPL twenty-five dash zero one for consulting services to complete a zero emissions transportation feasibility study to WSP Canada Inc. for the proposed cost of ninety-two thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars plus applicable taxes.
Made by Councillor Bonnie Pinch. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Councillor Larry Pinch. Did I say Bonnie or Bob? You said Bonnie Pinch. Bonnie, okay. I was looking at her. She was still in the study. So I grouped it all in one. So council, the recommendation is that Committee of the whole recommend that council approve awarding RFP number WHRMPL two-five dash oh one for consulting services to complete a zero emissions transportation feasibility study to WSP Canada Inc. for the proposed cost of ninety-two thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars plus applicable taxes. So all those in favor, show of hands. So we have two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favor. All those opposed, and we have three opposed, Councillor Yanish, Councillor Scott McLean and Councillor John Smith. So a motion is passed. There's a second part of that. Councillor Bonnie Smith?
Excuse me. The Committee of the whole recommend that council approve a ten percent consulting contingency in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents plus applicable taxes for the zero emissions transportation feasibility study.
Made by Councillor Bonnie Smith, seconded by Councillor Larry Pinch. So the motion is that Committee of the whole recommend that council approve a ten percent consulting contingency in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents plus applicable taxes for the zero emissions transportation feasibility study. All those in favor, show of hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, four. All those opposed. Opposed Councillor Yanish, Councillor Scott McLean and Councillor John Smith. So motion is carried. Thank you, John. Have a good evening. Moving right along, we're into reports. So we have CAO Activity Update Information Report, which was included. So Council CAO, I'll let you take it over.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As noted, this was a late addition. We tried to add a little bit on the water utility, which I expect council may want to dive into that a little bit. So I'll just hit some of the highlights. So again, we have not met since July, in July with meetings recessing over the summer. So you see some of the activities of council and a meeting or two this week. And I think as Madam Chair you mentioned, it's, it's a busy month. Some of the highlights in the administration section is just either ongoing discussion with QP. We had some labor management meeting. We have a number of meetings with some of our outside agencies. West Hans Historical Society with some of their activity, and I think we'll expect to have a presentation from them in the near future. I think we did circulate some of their updates by email in the month of July. So those folks are still working on their project and mobilizing and doing all the things they're doing to try to move that project ahead. And something to bring back to council as well. We've had a lot of activity around the unhoused in our community, of course, stemming back to your special council meeting, actually, which I missed because it wasn't in my calendar. I need to add that. And the decisions of council to, in response to the wildfire and fire threats. So we've tried to continue to support, and I think the combination of ourselves, the Posse Project, I'm certain perhaps behind the scenes, care mongers and Harvest Home have all been helping folks through this period of time. I feel confident that we've fulfilled our obligations and our commitments to folks, and we try to, to still try to go above and beyond when we can. A majority of our effort is in what we would call the Shell Park here, in the provision of some of the supports that we as a municipality had agreed to. So there's, again, it's not an ideal situation in any, in any form or fashion, but for the most part, we're managing with the assistance of everyone involved. And some of our other sites, we've been able to kind of their original state just because of all the consolidation of folks in this site. Certainly open to answer any questions about that as well when I'm finished. Another highlight, of course, is the utility. So we've tried for the benefit of council here to very high level, and I'm sure Director Richard is prepared to support any questions you might have. You know, just to give everyone an indication and, and some examples of, of course, these things, if you've been to these locations, they mean something. If not, they are what they are. But what they do indicate for this report is to try to share with council and the community that we have had some historic low levels of water and drought, and the most recent reference is twenty sixteen. And that photo that Deanna is showing there shows twenty sixteen at, I guess we would say at the height of the drought. And then you can see twenty twenty-five yesterday or today, I believe, in comparison. It's a little different angle, but you can see that it's alarming. And of course, we could have had a third photo there to show what it looks like. And I don't know how it feels to me, like is it at least a three, four foot elevation change in water, maybe, maybe more. But that across the whole system. So that shows that, you know, it's a significant But that across the whole system. So that shows that, you know, it's a significant drop in what our normal operations might be and our normal supply, because that is the supply for the Windsor slash Three Mile Plains, what we call the Windsor Mill Lakes facility. Moving down, Deanna, into the Hansport facility, try to give you a little different example there of where we're at. And that's a comparison as well to some of our historic levels where we say in the report, we're seeing daily decreases, but we're holding levels from last Friday until today at what folks would reference the 58 inch mark down on the gauge. And you can see some of the traditional depths and that Todd were giving the example there in 2022. So we see 90, 88, 86 in the September, in the month of September, some of those as a reference. So we are not at the historic level that folks are reporting, at least in those two utilities, as far as how low the levels have been, but either fast approaching or in alignment with. So those are an example there for the, for that facility. The Falmouth facility, we have, this is always a kind of a reference as to how that intake is doing. And some of the notes here, we say that we have, actually, in that case, we've seen a recovery of that supply over the weekend where water levels in the reserve have increased three or four centimeters. Doesn't seem like a lot, but due to the rain that we had on Sunday. And this has provided consistent downstream spillage as well as, that's an important piece. And those are all things that we need to balance. We're not just balancing treatment and the use of the water, but the requirements for the, what we'll call the downstream flows that we need to try to maintain because of water and aquatic life that's in the system. So we have to try to maintain those water flows downstream, which of course do not provide a benefit to the utility users. But of course, our obligations that we need to meet. So we can come back to those a little bit. Just to round it off, Deanna, down to the section, just some of the meetings associated with Protective Services ongoingly, whether it's in the police, fire, EMO world as it relates to the current conditions. And of course, with respect to the wildfires, we're not directly engaged as an EMO, but I think we're on about sit rep 60 now at the provincial level. So we're engaging Troy or acting, EMC is engaging in those environments to get up to speed and to stay current with what's happening in other areas of the province. And of course, monitoring whether those things at all come over to that EMO environment. So we're, we're not active from that sense, but we're maintaining communication and awareness of what's going on at provincial level. So Madam Chair, those are some of the highlights over the last month and a half. And again, we're prepared to answer some questions as best we can on some of those topics.
Okay, Councillor Remy?
Through you Deputy, just, this is more of a comment than anything else. From somebody who works with homeless populations, I just want to commend staff and, well, staff on how responsive they've been to those situations and just the work that's been done behind the scenes. Because I know a lot of people aren't aware of the work that you guys are doing, but also being very aware of the work that, actually, I'm just going to leave it at that. Yeah, I just want to commend you guys for all of the work that you did and how responsive you've been in working with all of the partners that support those folks.
Great. Thank you. Councillor McLean?
Thank you Deputy. Guess through you to the Director of Public Works. I've got a couple of questions. Just for some water haulers. Director, is there any way that we could set up like a quota program for the water haulers? Because I know a lot of them are back to work or commits, commitments during the day and they can't like actually haul water during the day. So with the restrictions in place right now, it makes it very hard for them to haul water.
Well, I've, I've been asked that before. Certainly, this is, you know, one, one means of kind of managing our supply is, is just restricting the times of when, when that's, when the haulers can haul. And the other reason is not just restricting the hours, but it's also having those hours when they're not hauling for our system to recuperate. So those are, you know, after supper hour and late into the night. So that's when our system, you know, our flows slow down. So certainly, you know, we can look at other options. You know, I don't want to be too stringent, you know, allowing certain haulers. I think there's a couple that, you know, can't haul through the day. So certainly if that's council's direction, we could probably work with a couple haulers of allowing them to see what, see what hours they want to haul. But again, at the end of the day, we do need to manage our supplies and, you know, hopefully further reductions aren't necessary, but we're trying to manage the Mill Lake supplies because that's our biggest watershed and trying to have reserves. So the pictures that our CAO showed, seems we're in good shape, but we just don't know how long the weather is going to not bring us any rain. So to have that reserve capacity, because the Falmouth system is probably the lowest. And at some point, we may need to connect a fire hose across the two systems because currently we don't have an air connection. So we're having that reserve capacity if we need to do that. Hopefully we don't get to do that, but certainly I do appreciate, you know, the concerns from the bulk water haulers. So if there's a nod aheads that it's something that council wants to support, certainly I could probably work with a couple of them, yes.
Thanks.
Councillor Larry Pinch?
Thank you through you Chair to Director Richard. Yeah, so I was going to pose a similar question, but not necessarily an increase in volume, but is there a way to adjust the hour? So instead of nine to five, I know that's the off time, but if there was a way to like, I don't know, stagger for those, but I think you've just suggested so. Because I also have received a couple of phone calls from residents in my district who receive water from those particular haulers who drive school buses and work a day job and then are unable to provide for those customers. So not so much a volume issue, but a timing issue.
Yeah. And again, we can work with them, but there is going to be a limitation just in the few weeks that we had. The, the one in Three Mile Plains opened, over 6 million litres have been drawn just from that bulk water station alone. So, so again, that's, that's water that we don't really, you know, anticipate using. And that water is being hauled at the critical time of year when we're in a shortage. So, you know, we, we base our systems on, on residents and developments. But, you know, this bulk water use is a peak time at the worst time that, you know, and we realize that people, people are, are struggling with maintaining their wells. And we do ask these haulers, you know, where, where are they hauling? Hopefully they're not filling swimming pools, but you know, they're trying to manage the, the critical components that our rural users, you know, need. But there, there is a point where our system wasn't designed for, you know, the greater whole area of West Hans. It was designed for the service areas that are our customers. And we're a regulated utility and we run our utility like a business. So we do need to manage that asset.
Mayor Zabian?
Yeah, a question on water, water hauling again, but to Director Rochon, if I could. And to Council as well, I know we went through a utility review board right here on our water utilities. We had an order October 1st, 2024, we will see a rate increase. April 1st, 2025, we'll see a rate increase. And April 1st, 2026, we'll see a rate increase. I think those were 736 October 1st per cubic meter, 917 April 1st, a disparate per cubic meter and 924 next April per cubic meter. I, I was made aware of on the weekend, the posts going around social media that we've increased those rates, Director Rochon, the last couple of weeks. Is that accurate or none that we know of? I don't believe it's true, but I just want to correct the record, just on the record that that is not a fact by any means.
No.
All right, perfect. That's all, that's all. But anybody watching at home, rates have not changed during this drought. It's unfortunate that some, some continue to want to spread that misinformation, but it's just not true. It's not accurate. Thank you.
Councillor Paul Wheaton?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Just kind of want to weigh in with Councillor McLean and Councillor Larry Pinch. I've gotten several calls from the water haulers and residents. In my district, there's many wells that have gone dry and it's not the fact the well has just gone dry, but it's caused problems for the pumps and it's bringing in plumbers and getting things regoing for these people. And it's, it's a big cost and it's a very stressful situation. So as Director Rocha, or Director Richard had said earlier about putting a water hose to link the two systems, is there any way that we can get the main bulk water system, whether it's through hauling and tankers or bringing in some other water into that facility to get this station open more for these people? And again, the ones that can't come in the regular day, to get it opened up, to get the supply in the mill shed higher other than rainfall, whether it be hauling and tankers or linking into it. Is there anything we can do in that respect, Director Rochon?
Not, not simply. I wanted to say, you know, there's no solution, but hauling, hauling water by tankers to supply or demand. It's, it would be a very expensive, very onerous to try to, you know, you're going to need treated water. You can't have a cross connection. So we can't connect into our distribution system with non-potable water. You know, there may be uses of non-potable water for the rural residents that they may be able to use. But to, to, to use transportation to haul to build up our watersheds, just the amount of water would be astronomical. What we're looking at and we do, you know, people say, well, we're not planning for the future. We do have, you know, plans for the future. We're currently, you know, building a large water storage tank off of Burgess Road in Three Mile Plains. That will be a huge asset when that's built to have that reserve capacity. Because it's not just, you know, it's not just meeting the daily demand. We have to have a reserve in our system for fire protection. One of our main objectives of a municipal water system is for fire protection. So that's hydrants and everything. So we have to have that reserve in our system at all times. So a major water main break or a major fire would deplete our systems, especially in these conditions. So it's again, just looking, we're planning, we're managing. All our staff are working diligently around the clock. Bigger items in our integrated resource plan that is currently out to tender now, we'll look at those things for, you know, up to 2050 of future supplies, groundwater, groundwater systems. I've mentioned in here, we have lakes close by. It looks like the lake's close by, but it's a huge capital cost to supplement, you know, a watershed. You know, they're great. Pontic Lake is a huge lake. They've had to do some, they have some issues with, with dams. That's why you see Pontic Lake as low as it is because they've made some modifications in the, in the Salmon Hole Dam area. But that resource is huge. Certainly, you know, long range projection to be able to pump from the Pontic Road system into the Mill Lake system. Again, a huge capital cost, but those are the things we're all looking at in that integrated resource plan. And then we'd be able to provide much more capacity. Most likely there'd be expansion to the treatment plant, but also there could be, you know, distribution systems connected, you know, even through Mount Denson to Hansport. So we're looking at these larger items, you know, again, very expensive projects. But, so I don't want to say no, that wouldn't be possible, but the logistics and the cost to do that would be, be very high.
Thank you for that. And then maybe as a follow-up, can the water haulers haul from Brooks Rivers lakes other than our supply to help out people who are out of water, like farms and things of that nature?
Yeah, absolutely. So Department Environment, anyone can haul out of a surface water, a lake or a river, as long as you're not hauling any more than 25 liters, 25,000 liters per day. So, you know, I have a, an area on Mokengi Lake. I see people with tote tanks hauling out of the Mokengi Lake. So there's no, there's no restrictions other than if you're over the 25,000 liters per day, you have to have a permit to withdraw. So that's a fair bit of water for the water haulers to, as a resource to supplement that, that supply for sure.
Thank you Director. Just trying to think outside the box here for these people because, you know, it's desperate times and any water is better than no water. But is it true that if a licensed hauler does haul from a river, that nullifies their ability to haul from our system?
Nope, that's, that's not correct. So, so we have, we inspect all our water haulers. They have to have a, it's like a safety inspection sticker. And the reason we do that is for that exact reason. So what we call is prevent cross contamination. So what we require is an air gap. So when they're filling from our bulk water station, there needs, the pipe is usually at the top of the tank and there's a separation of air. It has to be two and a half times the diameter of that pipe. So theoretically, if they filled that tank, it was contaminated, there's no physical way that that water in the tank or any spillage can get into our system. It's theoretically impossible with that air gap.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Ivy?
Thank you Chair. That was really informative, the air gap and all the information. As it relates to the haulers and the question on that, if I can just go back to that a bit, it's noted in the report that there's 28 inches. It's inches, is that correct? It's not, it's inches, that's the current, what's showing on the gauge for Mill Lake. And I'm going to focus on Mill Lake because that seems to be where we're hauling or drawing from for this purpose. So what does that translate into? If I can ask Director Richard, like how far can that go? Like what do we have for drawing capacity? Can you kind of give us the context of what that means for, clearly, we wouldn't take 26 down to an inch or, but can you just educate us on that a bit?
Sure. So, so part of that is, is the unknown. 26, you know, I've been in this business for, for 30 some years. 2016 was the lowest that I seen the Mill Lakes reservoir back at the dam site, the Earth and Dam site. So that was, that's a benchmark for us. At that time, we were, you know, how much lower can we go? So it's really an unknown. We do know what our source water capacity is as far as our water withdrawal permit. What could we haul? And that's kind of based on that, you know, having that yield capacity in the lake. So, so we're at a fairly comfortable level right now. But again, we, we don't have a crystal ball to know when we're going to get adequate rainfall and projections of in to get out of the drought conditions where we're 200 plus millimeters. So that's probably, you know, hopefully over a longer range of period, five or six days to get just to that point where we're into the drought condition. So, so we're, it's just the unknown. So again, for us to manage our systems, we just can't allow the system to exceed our withdrawal capacity. And we also have to meet what's referred to as an ecological maintenance flow. So we need to spill downstream of our dam. Normally that's our biggest user. We're having trouble to meet that ecological maintenance flow because, you know, we're trying to, you know, reserve as much as possible, but we are spilling. And that's why one of the, one of the pictures was the, the Falmouth system where we call it the morning glory. That's the intake where if nothing's spilling into that circular structure, nothing is flowing downstream. So we need to maintain that. So we're trying to achieve multiple things to manage our water supply while also meeting that ecological maintenance flow. So we don't really have a number or how far. Fortunately, we do have some mechanical devices like pumps and intakes that we can push out into the lake further, deepest part of the lake. If we do, you know, continue to experience low levels in Mill Lakes. But fortunately, Mill Lake is, you know, it may look shallow, but Mill Lake is, we refer to it as, it's like a sponge. It has a very deep bottom, a very marshy bottom. So we're hoping that, you know, we won't get into a point where we can't meet that downstream flow. Because once it leaves the Mill Lake structure, has to flow all through, you know, Still Waters and in a Brook, probably about two and a half kilometers before it reaches the water treatment plant. So there is a delay, usually about a 12 hour delay. If we noticed a difference in the flow leaving the Earth and Dam to when it reaches the plant. So we have to manage that 12 hour delay too. So.
Okay, that's also.
I know that's a lot, but it's, there's, it's, it's, it's more complicated than just looking at a staff gauge and saying, once it hits this number, we're, we're in dire straits. We're just trying to maintain, manage that, that supply. And again, with fires and water main breaks, that 12 hour delay. So we're only putting, pulling so much out of the lake. And we could pull our reservoir at the treatment plant down. Those councillors have been there. So then we would be in a situation where we weren't spilling downstream. And, you know, so there's a reserve in that, that small reservoir at the plant too. So trying to manage all those things.
Right, but our primary.
And that's where if the bulk water haulers are hauling, you know, steady, we just can't replenish quick enough. So our reserves and the reservoir get down and we're not spilling for it to maintain an ecological maintenance flow.
Right. Our primary focus is on the, I'll call it the upper section of the lakes. And then what we let go over goes down to the reservoir, whatever that structure is down. So with that in mind, with the requirements for fire protection, that also factors into that. I don't know what that percentage works out to be, but I guess the one comment I'd make is it relates to the residents that rely on bulk water haulers in order to replenish wells in the lake is that that demand doesn't go away, even though we shorten our window that they've had the ability to pull water from. That demand is still there. When somebody's out of water, they're out of water. It's not getting replenished because we're not getting replenished. So it's, it's not getting filled in. I think it would. I think it would be something to try and find a way to do that balance. And I don't know what that is. I don't. You know, there's a lot there to manage to make sure that that all sorts itself out, but I don't. And I don't know what our total number of water haulers is in the area, but it, is it 10? Is it like, do you folks know based on what we have licensed?
So in the peak town, that's buried there for for a while. There was a lot of people trying to get inspections, you know, buying tote tanks and hauling. So we had quite a peak when we were first getting into these dry conditions. And again, it's not, it's not really our jurisdiction. Once it leaves the bulk water hauler, we're not in that business of, you know, trucking water. So we try to, you know, tread lightly on that business and telling, you know, suggesting water haulers. But again, you know, we do ask those questions. And the majority of, you know, sometimes twice a week, they're hauling to what we refer to as as a ground well. And, you know, maybe somebody can replenish that and stays, but I do know with the drought conditions and the low water table. That is only buying them probably a couple of days because they're trying to fill a water table that's, you know, in a ground well. Our suggestions were, you know, tote tanks, water storage tanks. And then you're, because you're not wasting that water, you're recuperating all that water and wants the bulk water. So again, some suggestions, but again, we tread lightly on those because it's not really our business.
All right. So my only reason for asking was was to, and I don't need to get that deep, honestly, but it was just on an order of magnitude as to how much added work and effort it is to manage that. To be able to see that we've got as many residents of West Hans getting water, because even though they're not on the system, those of us who have a tap that's running regularly and paying the monthly fees and so on. But bulk water is part of our business model. We we sell bulk water for transit to those that don't have it. And so it's a matter of without risking the complete supply, if there's something that can be done that would assist in stretching out. We're in mandatory conservation now, so I don't. And as you think about that, even when you start looking at what you can do to cut back your water use. It's not within a household generally, I mean, aside from those things that are obvious wastes of water, it's not an easy thing to squeeze it back. And the same thing with the folks that don't have water in the district. So I would just encourage whatever can be done in that regard, if it's at all possible, to find some way that those haulers can can get that demand satisfied to at least stretch as much out as possible without risking the whole system that you've talked about.
Yeah. And that's a good point. And if I could, Madam Chair, you know, our conservation, our voluntary conservation, we really didn't notice much of a difference. Since we went to the mandatory, we have seen a reduction in our flows. Along with, you know, we are repairing leaks, service leaks on our systems. So our crews are, that's priority number one. Every time, you know, we're leak detection and fixing leaks. Just to give you an average, our average before mandatory restriction. And this is just on the Windsor Windsor side, an average of 165 cubic meters per hour was the average in a 24 hour period. Now we're down to 140 cubic meters per hour. So that's a fairly substantial reduction in a 24 hour period, that average flow. So we are seeing some benefits. And I think the mandatory one is certainly because before, you know, we did see people watering their lawns. Very few warnings have gone out to date since we had the mandatory and we're in the warning stage. So these people are on record, but we are seeing a difference. So I think the mandatory has helped, so. And I don't know if anyone's following news, it's not just West Hans. Halifax Water was on CBC last night. Most likely in the next couple of days, they're looking at a mandatory restriction. Maybe not system wide, but the Lake Major system is is seeing some, some very low levels in the in the Lake Major watershed, so.
Okay, councillors, I have been keeping track of lights. So councillor Paul Morton.
Sure. I just got three quick questions. They're not heard. So the water system we have in place now was built by the water utility users and paid for and maintained by the users. Not by the whole West Hand. So it's not an area rated item.
That's correct. So like, we are regulated water utility funded by the customers. So it's heavily regulated. It's not funded through tax base, not funded through general tax revenue. It's funded through customers that a bulk water station would be a customer when the bulk water haulers. So it's not the residents getting their well filled because as soon as it leaves the bulk water station, that's their customer, the the trucking company. So yes, it's totally funded by the the users.
And it wasn't built to for be able to supply West Hans with all of the water. It's just if we get extra and able to supply it, that's the way it works.
Outside of these conditions, we have no problem supplying the bulk water haulers because usually that demand is lower. And the bulk water station in Three Mile Plains is the first. That was, it was another one on the Windsor system, was always on the Falmouth system. West Hans previously had one here at Morrison Drive, but so correct. That's a separate.
And last question, is there any hidden gems out there of water that we can tap into in the future if we have unlimited money?
Absolutely. So I think I referred to that before, you know, we do have lots of large bodies of water in our area. But, you know, it's, it sounds simple. It's, oh, there's the water, but the expense, it's very expensive transmission pumping to be able to get that to the, and then the treatment, you know, if we're going to expand treatment facilities. But those certainly are things that we're looking at in our integrated resource plan, along with the the water storage tank that's currently being built, the interconnection between Windsor and Falmouth. And also the third process train that's currently been tendered and awarded for the Windsor plant. So that will build redundancy, meeting the capacity, meeting the needs as long as they're longer term. Potential future water sources. And we'll look at all those options, being groundwater and surface water. So but those will come at a at a big cost too. So and will need to be paid for through the customers. So so again, there's a balancing act. We don't want to oversize the system and burden the customers. Because, you know, if we we had elaborate, you know, huge water treatment plants that would could be planned for things that we don't know, like these drought conditions. Just that cost alone would be a burden onto the customers. So we're trying to have a balance here of maintaining what we need to provide and we are providing that, you know, we don't have a an issue. Providing all our customers water, there's no pressure, there's no blackouts. There's, we're able to provide our customers the water needed, along with having the reserves for for fire protection. So that's not an issue. It's not like we're not able to provide that. We're just just looking, we're managing, we need to look to the future because we don't know when we're going to get that rain. So we need to need to be proactive and prevent a critical situation from happening, so.
And I'll just add to that response. The Utility and Review Board would also want to look at that option because if it wasn't support, typically they don't support capacity growth that isn't linked to customer growth. So they would wonder, why are we expanding our system to service more draw? And we would say resilience, but they might come back with further questions and it could be a cost sharing between the users as well as the municipality if they deem it to not be just for the capacity of customers.
Councillor John Smith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I just want to say I'm all in favor of the quota system or change in the hours of operation. I think that makes a lot of sense. I I did want to ask you about the firefighting capability and whether we have enough water to fight a major fire. Did I hear you right when you said that? Yes, we are okay.
Yes. So that, and that's what we're trying to do, our clear wells and our stand pipes, we're maintaining those as full as we can. And again, it's the peak and valley. So in the in the early mornings when most people are getting up, that's when our peak demand is higher. And then the evenings when people are getting home from work, you know, preparing supper and taking showers. So that's the ebb and flow. So our water tanks and our clear wells will ebb and flow with those peaks. But we do, we have a fire flow allowance and we have an emergency allowance and we're keeping those those full. So so we are capable of fighting fires as per the the design requirements in our our designed capacity, so.
And lastly, you've been fixing a lot of water leaks in in Falmouth. Has that helped a lot? Have you been noticing that you're using less water?
So not just Falmouth, Three Mile Plains, Windsor, Hansport and Falmouth, you know, our crews have been, you know, working, working diligently, long hours, lots of overtime, weekend, you know, repairing, being very diligent. Again, a silver lining, one thing about these drought conditions is we're able to detect, you know. Geez, why is that? Why is it a trickle of water running down or why is there a green, green section, a ditch? So we've been able to identify some leaks that are usually tough to find. So they're very diligent and those certainly are helping because those small leaks, they leak 24/7. It's not just like a water main break, you know, happens for four or five hours. These leaks go on 24/7, 365 days a year. So to pinpoint those leaks certainly does does help. Leak detection, like I said before, leaks will always happen, we'll fix leaks and then more will happen. So it's a consistent, you know, it's cyclical. We keep, we we find them, we repair them and then more will happen. It's just, and that's all systems. That's just distribution, water distribution, water one, you know, we have to maintain our leaks and manage our leaks and fix our leaks.
Thank you.
Councillor Larry Pinch.
Thank you through your chair. So I do not have expertise in bulk water hauling. But I'm just wondering if there's the ability, because I know, like, if we're drafting, we're going to throw a floating dock in. I can, I can fill a tank and I consistently pull water from a fire perspective. Is there a way that one of our extra pumps that we have could be set up at a natural body of water? That we could fill bulk water haulers? Because you said it didn't have to be potable water. And I think most of the time, at least in my district, a lot of people don't necessarily have potable water in their wells. So they use it, you know, for for showering and hygiene needs and also they boil it for cooking. Is there, is that a simple thing or it's not a simple thing? Because from a fire perspective, it's super simple, but maybe it's not simple.
Yeah, quite simple. I think a lot of, you know, I don't know how many, but certain bulk water haulers have, you know, a little Honda gasoline engine that they, you know, they just draw the lake and similar, very much smaller scale than a fire truck, but that's how they fill their tanks. And like I said, by my place on Mokengi, I see, you know, I follow there almost every evening. He has a little gas pump and he's filling a couple of those tote tanks. And I don't know where he's taking it, but that's how he's managing his his water. It was for personal use, but certainly the bulk water haulers could do that also for sure.
Thank you.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Deputy. I got two questions, one for Director Richard, one for Director Rashaun. Start with Director Richard. Could the water harder bulk water haulers, could they, could they fill out of the dry hydrants in some of the rural districts? Is that possible? Just curious.
That may be a little more challenging because with the dry hydrant, you have to have a primer pump. So you have to like a vacuum pump to, you know, evacuate all the air. So most, most likely they wouldn't be set up to draw from a dry hydrant. They would need like a static water source of a lake or a stream to be able to put their suction in and then prime their pump and then fill their tank. But I don't think anybody would be set up for a dry hydrant use.
Thank you. And through you to Director Rashaun. I had a call, actually two calls from bulk water haulers today. And they say that the price of the the price of water went up, I think in the last couple of days. No? Okay. All right. Thanks.
Mayor Zabian.
Yeah. So councillor, are you good with giving Director Richard direction to allow the two or three water haulers who have a day job to pump after hours? I don't know how you'd work that out, but.
We could, I think the quota system works. So, you know, you know, a couple, a couple loads after hours.
Without creating more demand, but just allowing for hours to service customers rather than them not being able to service those customers. So I think we're okay with that then.
And again, I know it's been talked about publicly, but you know, I think, you know, it needs to be on and on our system as long as, you know, if it's after hours and we need to be able to manage that that bulk water station because it's it's a it's a big draw on our system, so.
Okay, we'll wrap it up. Councillor Ivy.
Thanks. Just the last question. I I can't recall what the status was on the Falmouth water supply. But where we've had it shut, does the ability exist to split the draw from the bulk station between what exists in Garland's Crossing and Falmouth as a way of balancing the load of available water, so to speak, or is it not possible at this stage to do that?
So so the bulk water station in Falmouth has been disconnected, not disconnected, shut down since even before the the voluntary conservation order. So everything's coming out of the Garland's Crossing Brooklyn Station to site. So that's allowed and that's, that was a huge draw on the Falmouth system. You know, it just couldn't support that. So luckily the Mill Lakes Windsor system is more robust and we're able to meet that demand with the with the lessened hours. But currently there's no bulk water system withdrawal on the Falmouth side.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank, oh, councillor Whedon will.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll be quick. Just so these bulk water haulers that need to go after hours, how do they get that set up? Do they contact you directly or what? What are we going to tell these folks?
That would be the best if they could reach out, you know, to my men assistants or even me, you know, by email and then we could set them up. It is under surveillance. So we know, you know, it's it's digital. So we know what haulers are hauling when, when the certain hours, how much. So we can certainly manage that. But so, yeah, so if they could just reach out to me via email or cell phone and we can accommodate them hopefully.
Thank you, Director Richard. Thank you.
Great. Great conversation there. Thank you, Director Rashaun and Doctor, or Director Richard. Anything else for a C A O? You got off the hot seat for your report. You directed it. Yeah. So move right along to course. Oh, sorry.
Just want to, if I could, you'd had finance in your report, Director, sorry, C O Phils, but nothing there with that. Anything, any status as to, we've got two audits taking place right now. Any sense as to what we have going on with those or where we're at from a timing standpoint of those?
Director Roshan, you were there. So the status of the two audits, please.
Both are underway and the water audit is kind of entering into its final stages. And the external audit is still being worked on. I know we've completed a couple of the smaller pieces of the external audit, but it hasn't got to draft statements yet.
Sorry, by external audit, you're referencing.
The external audit would be the financial audit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great. Nobody else. Okay, we're going to move right along to 10 correspondence information. Correspondence received ledger as of September 5th, 2025. We received a letter from DMA, letter to mayor's wardens or value for money audit of the Nova Scotia Firefighters School report. So I believe we all saw that. There's no requests. There is no correspondence sent. So that gets us down to new business. So A, appointment of alternate development officer recommendation report, acting director Fugier.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening. So staff is recommending that an alternate development officer, William Overholt be appointed basically to help maintain service levels in the event that our fully appointed development officer be absent. The details are fully laid out in my report, but happy to answer any questions or anything to clarify.
Is there any questions for acting director Fugier at this time? Councillor Ivy.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I guess, just by way of, because we don't know the staff at a deep detail the way you do and so on. But so he's been with West Hans for four or five months now, I think, am I right? And just his background or his experience at the at the planning level and so on. Can you just give us a highlight on that?
Yes, through you, Chair. So he's been with the municipality since the beginning of April of this year. So just about six months, I guess that brings us to now. He has a background in planning, so a masters of planning and has a couple of years of municipal experience in with another municipal unit. But yeah, is fully qualified to be a development officer.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Director Fugier. So councillor, there is a staff or there is a recommendation there if anyone would like to make it. To the councillor or councillor Whedon?
The committee of the whole recommends that council appoint William Overholt as alternate development officer in the absence of the development officer effective September 24th, 2025, in accordance with section 243 of the Municipal Government Act.
By councillor Whedon, is there a second? Seconded by councillor Larry Pinch. So the committee of the whole recommends that council appoint William Overholt as alternate development officer in the absence of the development officer effective September 24th, 2025, in accordance with section 243 of the Municipal Government Act. All those in favor, show of hands. Councillor Janisch, motion carried. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to B, diverse equitable inclusive communities committee recommendation report, Clerk Snare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening before you was a recommendation report for the diverse.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening before you is a recommendation report for the diverse equitable community, inclusive communities committee. If you've previously seen these recommendation reports, as there's been several vacancies, with this appointment, if supported, it will remain, it will leave one vacancy to be fulfilled. And the report is before you this evening.
Are there any questions for Clerk Snare on this? Seeing none, there is a motion on the screen. Counselor Larry Pinch.
That Committee of the Whole recommends that Counsel appoints Jess West as voting citizen member to become a representative in support to the diverse equity and inclusive communities committee for a two-year term beginning September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, until September twenty-third, twenty twenty-seven.
The Counselor Larry Pinch, is there a second or Counselor Paul Whedon? So motion is Counsel appoints Jess West as voting citizen member to become a representative in support to the diverse equity inclusive communities committee for a two-year term beginning September twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, until September twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven. All those in favor, a show of hands. Counselor Yanish, motion carried. Thank you very much. We'll move on to C, fall to venture recommendation report, Director Rashaun.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is again, a report that was circulated within your package. These are all projects that have been approved through previous budgets and/or council motion. Um, and we are kind of heading into our final stages by clearing the amount, uh, and borrowing against, for, from the municipal finance division. So the first, uh, chart that you see is relating to what we are asking. So the municipal finance division announced their fall to venture on July eighteenth. Um, and West Hans Regional Municipality councils approved the following projects. Um, and we have segregated those projects into five years and ten years. So in the five-year category, we are, have two hundred and ninety-four eighty-eight in our total project cost, and we have four hundred and ten-two oh nine in our total ten-year cost. One of the requirements to borrow from the municipal finance division is to have a approved T B R or a temporary borrowing resolution from the Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing. That will be submitted to the municipal finance division as part of this, uh, fall to venture package. So moving into the, um, next table that we have under the financial implications. There is no impact to the twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget as all of these amounts have been budgeted for within the debt servicing costs of the operating budget. Some of these projects may have spanned multiple years. So some of them do have, uh, multiple years of debt servicing that we've already accumulated. So what you'll see within the first column that we had accumulated twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-two in debt servicing through the operating budget. And so we were able to reduce our borrowing or our pre-resolution amount to two hundred and sixty-one, three fifty-six. And in our ten-year category, we had a hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-four of debt servicing that we accumulated. So we were able to reduce our borrowing amount to three hundred and two and forty-five dollars. So the total T B R is being requested for five hundred and sixty-three, four oh one. That is going to the Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing for ministerial approval. And then once that is approved, as well as the pre-resolution signed off on by the mayor and the clerk, those will all be sent to municipal finance division to enter into an agreement for borrowing to the venture. Um, I do ask Madam Chair if you can make one amendment to the motions and change the six point five to seven percent.
Okay, six point five to seven percent. Okay, Counsel, is there any questions for Director Rashaun on the, the report? Counselor Ivy.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, just one if I could, uh, through you to Director Rashaun. So these are all noted as budget approvals, twenty-four, twenty-five, so previous year's budget cycle. So we've had most of these initiatives already underway with a prior debenture issuance. Are they coming in for the first time now?
Uh, so one of the requirements to borrow through a debenture is that the project has to be one hundred percent complete. So these would not have prior borrowing. When I referenced the debt servicing, it was that we budgeted for it in the operating budget, and we hold that amount to reduce the debt. So there would have been debt servicing in twenty-four and twenty-five's operating budget, as well as twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget.
Thank you. So do we offset that with the debenture that we've, we've effectively paid that?
Yeah. So each year I transfer that to a carryover. And once the debenture is approved, I move the amount that's in this total from the debenture to our investment into capital assets against our debt.
Okay. So thanks for that. And then the one specific point, if I could, is on the electronic meter reading, uh, system. And it's in at one sixty as a budget amount, but in our budget for the last year, we only had like a twenty thousand dollar amount allocated for this year. Is that because we're adding a new set of electronic meter reading equipment into the current year's budget?
Into the current year's budget, it might be meters. So meters are one of the things that were budgeted for separately. Um, but I will look to Director Richard to kind of speak on that specifically. But I do know that the twenty-three, twenty-four, the twenty-four, twenty-five both had the electronic meter systems switch over. And, um, there was meter purchases as well as I T equipment and training that went into that.
So this, it appears, at least in the current budget, is the last year that we're purchasing those. Is that correct? Or am I?
In the current budget, it might, this would be considered a different project because we're considering it complete. So what you're seeing here is the cost to finalize and upgrade the system, including the equipment, the training, and the software, all of the things that we needed to comply with that, as well as an initial rollout of meters and the sensor pads.
I've got it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Rashaun? Seeing none. Thank you very much for the report. There is a motion there, Counsel, if anyone wishes Mayor Zabian.
Yep. Counsel approves temporary borrowing resolution in the amount of five hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and one dollars, as outlined in the September ninth in the fall twenty twenty-five debenture report. Want to do them all separate or?
You can do it all as one.
Okay. Further, uh, Mayor Municipal Clerk to sign the resolution for pre-approval of the venture issuance, subject to interest rate confirmation not to exceed seven percent to enable West Hand Regional Municipality issue a five-year debenture of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars for a fire equipment purchase for Hansford Fire Department Electronic Meter Reading System. They're separate.
You're separate after that? Okay. I thought, okay.
Nope, you can continue on.
I, I thought.
All right. Mayor Municipal Clerk to sign a resolution for pre-approval of the venture issuance, subject to interest rate confirmation not to exceed seven percent to enable West Hand Regional Municipality to issue a ten-year debenture of three hundred and two thousand, forty-five dollars for the purchase of an R T V trailer for Brooklyn Fire Department and sidewalk machine and repairs to the Windsor Fire Department Apparatus Area.
Made by Mayor Zabian. Is there a second or?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor John Smith. So I will reread it.
Just a quick question here.
Okay.
So this apparatus area, should it be apparatus? Area doesn't make any sense. Aerial should be, shouldn't it?
Yeah. Windsor Fire Department Apparatus Aerial?
Yep.
Uh, apparatus.
Apparatus area. So it's the actual truck bay where the area is. So it's actually building related versus apparatus related. So it's, yeah. Sorry, it took me a minute.
Not a problem. Then I will read it. Counsel approves a temporary borrowing resolution, the amount of five hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and one dollars, as outlined the September ninth in the fall twenty twenty-five debenture report. Further, the mayor municipal clerk to sign the resolution for pre-approval of debenture issuance, subject to interest rate confirmation not to exceed seven percent to enable West Hans Regional Municipality to issue a five-year debenture of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars for fire equipment purchase for Hansport Fire Department Electronic Meter Reading System. The mayor and municipal clerk to sign the resolution for pre-approval of debenture issuance, subject to interest rate confirmation not to exceed seven percent to enable West Hans Regional Municipality to issue a ten-year debenture of three hundred and two thousand and forty-five dollars for the purchase of an R T V trailer for Brooklyn Fire Department and sidewalk machine and repairs to the Windsor Fire Department Apparatus Area. Everyone good with that? Okay, all those in favor, a show of hands, please. Counselor Yanish, so motion, oh, sorry, we have eleven, four. Those opposed, Counselor Ivy, one opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everybody. So we'll move along. So updated H M C C taxing resolution recommendation report, Director Rashaun.
Thank you, Your Worship. So Counsel had approved the budgets in, um, June, and as part of our review, uh, we were looking at the twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, H M C C area rate resolution. And during the deliberations, it looks like the wrong version got read. So we are coming back to update that taxing resolution for H M C C so that it doesn't impact their funding disbursement. And that funding disbursement is dependent on the receipt of their financial statements, which they just forwarded to us. So we should be bringing that back in October. So this will work within that timing. Um, and that the correct rate was charged, uh, as it was built into the twenty-five, twenty-six taxing resolution.
Are there any questions for Director Rashaun on this before we go to the motion? Counselor Ivy.
Uh, just one question. So I'm a little bit lost on the correct rate being cherished because it was built into the tax rate.
Yep.
So is it that formula-wise, it was incorrect, or is it just, we just had the wrong words when the motion was put forward? And you?
The wrong words were read. We had probably at least three versions of this H M C C resolution, because it changes as the, uh, tax rate changes. And just the wrong version was brought up when we were reading it on screen.
Formula was correct. It was just.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, there's a motion. Uh, Counselor Larry Pinch.
Uh, that Counsel Committee of the Whole, should that be? Approve the updated twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Hansport Memorial Community Center area rate charge as presented to Counsel on September ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Made by Counselor Larry Pinch, seconded by Counselor Paul Whedon. Any questions on the motion? No. So I'll reread it. Committee of the Whole approve, Counsel approve the updated twenty-five, twenty-six Hansport Memorial Community Center area rate charge as presented to Counsel on September ninth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, show of hands. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on, emergency funding request, Falmouth wastewater treatment sludge removal recommendation report, Director Richard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, so the report is fairly technical, so I don't want to get into too many details. I think you all have had time to review it. But this is, uh, uh, it's a critical repair, uh, needed at the Falmouth Wastewater Treatment Plant. So, so having this picture does kind of explain a few things. You can see the, uh, the curvature to the left. That should be a straight line. So the aeration equipment below this sludge blanket, uh, should be straight. It's detached, uh, somewhat from the bottom. And to the far right, you see hardly any aeration. So that should be another straight line. So staff feel that it's become disconnected, uh, either through rotten bolts or just the, uh, the anchorage, uh, the, the concrete tank has, has come undone. So without the aeration, um, this, uh, this sludge blanket will become anaerobic, uh, start to generate fair, fair bit of odors and a fair bit of upset. So we need to, uh, get rid of this sludge. Um, no easy feat because we don't have, uh, a sludge drying mechanism at any of our plants, uh, other than geotubes, and all our geotubes are full. So what the plan is to truck, truck this sludge is fairly thick right now. Um, and truck it to, uh, the Loomers disposal facility i- in the valley. So we did receive, uh, three quotes. We just received another one, uh, late this afternoon, uh, but the low bidder is still Loomers at the price of sixty-three thousand dollars plus, plus net H S T to dispose of this, uh, the sludge material, allow the repairs to happen, and then it can be put back in service. So, so it is critical. So we're, uh, looking for Counsel to approve the, uh, the motion to allow these things to happen and, uh, no upsets to occur.
Thank you, Director Richard. Are there any questions on the report for Director Richard? Counselor McLean.
Deputy, I threw you to Director Richard. Uh, can we use our, our backtrack to do some of this work? Or is this something that it can't do or?
Yeah. So, so great question. We have done some of that, just to buy us some time. We've transported some of this to our, to our other facility. But there's seven hundred thousand liters of sludge. So, uh, that's a lot of trips in our little vacuum truck. So we need, uh, tankers. You know, tractor trailers to haul this stuff away. They can haul. What's the quote here? I think it's, it's still quite a few loads, but, uh, it's just, we, we, we can't do it with our vacuum truck. Uh, it does need to be pumped and sucked out and put into the trucks. We may be able to help with that to decrease some of the costs, but that's our, that's our estimate. We're hoping we, uh, we padded enough that, uh, we think there's maybe less sludge because we have digested it, it has chewed up. So the sixty-three thousand should, should get us to where we need to be.
Counselor Ivy.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just one question, I think, uh, through you to Director Richard. So Todd, this didn't just appear to be a surprise. Like, it appeared to be a big surprise from the standpoint of, we don't have this built into the budget, uh, this year or for the next five years. So, what sort of happened here that, uh, is this not unusual or?
So, so it has been built into the five-year. If you look at our five-year capital, um, we have sludge management, sludge disposal. The surprise was the, the aeration system failing. So, um, it's still working. The operators have had to decrease the C F Ms going through that sludge tank. So it's normally about fifty C F M. We're down to ten C F M, just to prevent that aeration system from totally breaking apart. So, and the reason I say it's in our capital budget, um, to, we have three, three facilities, the three lagoon drive, the headworks, and the Falmouth Wastewater Treatment Plant. So our plan is, and again, with the, the design that we're going through now for a third phase in Falmouth, to construct a drying bed, an area that we can take this sludge, because most of the, the, the sludge weight is water. So we can dry this stuff to, you know, very dry, and then it's, and we can land apply it in certain areas. We get approval. So that's what's in our capital plan for, uh, full sludge, sludge management for all our facilities. So, so the surprise is the aeration tubes. The plant's, uh, was built in two thousand and ten, so about fifteen years. And no sludge has been transported away, other than what's in our geotubes. But it's just land area we don't have currently for, for more geotubes. So.
Thanks very much. I may have overlooked, I didn't see it for, and, uh, but I may have been in the one year instead of the five. So.
And sludge removal is quite expensive. You know, we're budgeting probably about five hundred thousand dollars for, for sludge management. So the sixty-three does kind of put that in comparison. Sludge management is expensive, but, you know, with that business, we do produce sludge. We have to manage it.
That's great. Thank you.
Counselor John Smith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So what, once the sludge is emptied out of the tank, is there, uh, possibility that you're going to have to do more repairs than you expect?
So, so that's built into the budget. Um, you know, stainless steel bolts, um, but it's in-house work. You know, our operators, we have mill rights, we have some very skilled staff that can do this work in-house. So we don't see that as a, a big issue. It's just we have to remove the sludge to get down there. You can imagine, we don't want to be working that to try, try to fix this system. So we need to clean that tank out before our operators can go down and do the work needed. So.
It's good to hear. Thanks.
Counselor Larry Pinch.
Thank you through your chair. Um, so just as a point of like logistics clarification for myself, if we were hauling out ourselves, we would have to move the sludge to another municipal treatment facility. But if we are paying for it to be removed, they are taking the sludge away.
So it's going to an approved facility. Loomers has an approved facility. There's not too many that will accept that type of sludge where it's that wet. AeroTech would be one in the city, but the valley where Loomers and he is the low, low bidder. So he's going to haul it and dispose of it and, uh, per approvals, because there needs to be approvals done when you're hauling this waste away.
Any other questions for Director Richard? Seeing none, there is a motion on the screen. If someone would like Counselor Bonnie Smith. The Committee of the Whole recommends Counsel approve the emergency pumping of, pumping and transportation of approximately seven hundred thousand liters of sludge from the Falmouth Wastewater Treatment Plant digesters to allow critical emergency repairs to the aeration system for the quoted price sixty-three thousand plus applicable taxes to be funded through the sewer reserves. Made by Counselor Bonnie Smith. Is there a second or? Seconded by Counselor John Smith. So. So I will read it. Council approves the emergency pumping and transportation approximately seven hundred thousand liters of sludge from the Falmouth wastewater treatment plant digesters to allow critical emergency repairs to the aeration system for the quoted price of sixty three thousand plus applicable taxes to be funded through the sewer reserves. All those in favor, show of hands. Counselor Yanish? Okay, so I have eleven four. Those opposed? Counselor Yanish, I'm not sure if you're. He's in favor. So motion passed. Okay. Must be a little bit of a delay there. So. So now we'll move along. And we are at F O'Brien Street Renewal Energy Services, RFP aboard Director Richard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Engineer Boder is going to take, take these, the next two.
Perfect.
I'll just be available for questions if needed.
Thank you, Chair. So I have two award recommendations that I'll go through this evening. And the first one is for O'Brien Street Renewal Engineering Services. So the scope of work for this project is engineering services to prepare tender specifications, drawings, and construction administration services for the renewal of O'Brien Street. This project is included in the municipality's five-year capital plan as a priority for replacement of the sewer lines, the water lines, and the storm lines underground and then street renewal. So full street construction, including sidewalks. And options for active transportation will also be considered as part of this project. So that kind of ties it to one of our earlier presentations this evening for active transportation. And the determination was based on the age and condition of the underground services and the street service conditions. O'Brien Street currently has a combined sewer system, which will be separated as part of this project. And this will also reduce the amount of flow entering the Conneble Creek sewer system. So that was identified in CBCL's report as area number eight. And it's actually thirty one acres out of the one hundred and nine acres that consist of Conneble Creek. So this will really help with that aspect as well. So the RFP was issued on July sixteenth and we received proposals on August seventh. And we're hoping by the end of the month that we'll be able to award this project after council later this month. So in terms of the schedule, the preliminary design report outlining options for active transportation and stormwater routing will be due in January next year. That will be followed by the seventy five percent tender documents in May. And by August next year, we hope that it will be at ninety percent. And then the final drawing set and tender documents will be ready by next October. And the goal is for the, the construction tender to be issued between November and February for construction in the two thousand twenty seven construction season. So the RFP was based on the following scoring criteria. So project understanding methodology, project team, and similar experience. So that forms the technical side of it for seventy points. And then thirty points was based on cost. So we followed a two envelope process where first we only received the technical proposals. And the, the main reason to do it that way is so that we can have an objective evaluation of the proposal's merits without knowing what the costs will be. And then after that process was complete, we opened the second envelope for the, the costing. So there were four submissions. The, the vendors are shown in the chart. The costs are shown and the total scores are shown. CBCL had the highest score for this project and they have significant experience with similar projects really across Atlantic Canada, but also here locally in our municipality. They also have a detailed knowledge of our infrastructure systems, including the Conneble Creek Combined Sewer System. So if we go back to the, the chart before, they, they scored high on really all those criteria. They have an intimate knowledge of the, the flooding conditions that we're experiencing. And it's really important that this project integrates with the, the work that's already been done. In terms of financial implications, Carly helped out with this chart. It shows the, the project costs and we broke it into two phases. So there's the engineering design and tendering services. And then there's the engineering project management services, which will take place during construction as well as a contingency. And it falls within the approved budget. So we have broken it into three recommendations. One of, the first one would be for the engineering design and tendering services. The second one is for project management services. And of course, the second motion would be pending approval of the construction contract. Whenever that happens, probably around two thousand twenty seven. And then the third motion is for the engineering contingency amount.
Okay. Are there any questions on the report for Tim? Counselor Ivy?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So the, the key piece of this that really gets my attention, ignoring the questions earlier on the earlier tender, but we've got a, I'll call it a fairly, a fair bit of a lower price. But net, net at the end of the day, we've got comparable scores. And so I'm not so concerned about that, but the thing that caught my attention here is the Conneble Creek piece. And we still have some final work coming in as it relates to that. And I don't want to let that distract us from this. But can you, can you assure me that in doing this and doing the separation that we're going to do here, that, that we aren't getting a cart before a horse, before knowing the bigger plan for how we're dealing with the storm and sewer flooding issue period? Because from what you said, this represents about thirty percent of that Conneble Creek catchment area. And so this would be a significant pull away from that system. Am I correct in that, Tim? And can you, can you kind of reassure me that it's okay, we'd be doing this anyways? And it would still have a benefit regardless of what the final outcome is otherwise?
Yes. So through the chair, that, that is correct. So in the workshop that we had with CBCL, one of the, the more recent goals is to get the, the system from Stanis Street away from Conneble Creek. And we're following the same kind of methodology with this project. So they, they will work hand in hand and both will be beneficial to the overall situation.
Regardless of ultimate paths that get taken, this is a good, right thing to do, period.
Yep, that's, that's correct.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for, for Tim? Counselor Ivy, you're done or a follow-up? Nope, you're good. Counselor John Smith?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So i- is this part of the plan to take some of the water away from Tremaine Crescent as well?
Actually, yes, it would because that water will also be going in the northerly direction away from Tremaine Crescent. So that is correct.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing no lights, thank you very much for the report. Counselors, there are three recommendations if somebody would like to make them. Counselor Bonnie Smith?
Committee of the whole recommends that council approve the award of the O'Brien Street Renewal Engineering Design and Tendering Services to CBCL Limited for the price of one hundred and twenty through two thousand eight hundred and ninety five dollars before applicable taxes.
Moved by Counselor Bonnie Smith. Is there a seconder?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor John Smith. So the first recommendation is approve the, committee of the whole recommends that council approve the award of the O'Brien Street Renewal Engineering Design and Tendering Service to CBCL Limited for the price of one hundred and twenty two thousand eight hundred and ninety five dollars before applicable taxes. All those in favor, hands up. Motion, so eleven four? Those, okay, you weren't here, sorry. So that's right. Just for the record, Counselor Larry Pinch was not in the room for the full presentation. So she has not voted. So we have eleven in favor. So the motion has passed. Counselor Bonnie Smith?
Committee of the home recommends that council approve the award of the O'Brien Street Renewal Engineering Project Management Services to CBCL Limited for the price of fifty two thousand two hundred and thirty five dollars before applicable taxes pending approval of the construction contract.
Made by Counselor Bonnie Smith. Is there a seconder?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor John Smith. So the recommendation is committee of the whole recommends that council approve the award of the O'Brien Street Renewal Engineering Project Management Services to CBCL Limited for the price of fifty two thousand two hundred and thirty five dollars before applicable taxes pending approval of the construction contract. All those in favor, show of hands. Motion passed with eleven. And again, Counselor Larry Pinch has sustained she was not in the room. Okay, Counselor Bonnie Smith, one more.
Council, Committee of the whole recommends that council approve an engineering contingency amount of twenty four thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars before applicable taxes.
Made by Counselor Bonnie Smith, seconded by Counselor John Smith. So the motion as read was committee of the whole recommends that council approve an engineering contingency amount of twenty four thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars before applicable taxes. All those in favor, show of hands. Motion passed by eleven. And again, Counselor Larry Pinch did not vote. So. Thank you, everyone. And last one for Director Richard, Windsor sidewalk replacement tender award. Oh, Tim, you're taking this one.
I will, yes.
And before Tim starts, council, it is eight o'clock. So we will let Tim finish this last one. And then if you desire, we can take a, a fifteen minute break. But we'll let Tim get through this.
Okay, so the second one is for the Windsor sidewalk replacement project. So the scope of this project is three sections of sidewalk that are currently asphalt. And the, the main object would be to renew them with concrete sidewalk. So it's Chestnut Street in Windsor from Avon to Gray. Gray Street from Chestnut, Chestnut to Albert and King Street from Gray to Garrish. So staff have prioritized the replacement of these sections based on the condition, pedestrian volumes, and operational concerns. And sidewalks included in the five-year capital plan for street renewals have not been included in this priority list, knowing that they'll be replaced as part of the, the bigger projects. I wanted to point out that the project specifications for this project were produced in-house. So we saved a little bit of money on consulting services by, by doing it ourselves. The Chestnut and Gray project locations are shown on the screen. So again, Chestnut would be from Avon Street to Gray. And then it actually continues along Gray until we get to Albert Street. And this phase for King Street would be from Gray to Garrish. So in the future, there, there are other locations. King Street requires more along really the north and south sides. Hansport has a few locations Jubilee Lane, Smith Crescent, and Pleasant Street. And then there's a few other ones in Windsor like Peasant, Victoria, and Fort Edward Street. But this year we were able to, to budget for these ones. So we received three tenders, one from Dexter, one from Ground Force Property Services, and one from Shehe Construction. And the pricing is shown in the chart. Shehe Construction had the lowest bid of just under four hundred thousand. Their submission was fully compliant with the tender requirements and they have significant experience with similar projects in the region. Therefore, they are being recommended to council for award of this project. In terms of the financial impact, there's actually two line items in the budget. One of them is specific to Chestnut Street. And there's another one that's a little bit more generic for replacing asphalt sidewalks with concrete. And the big picture here is that we are under budget by two hundred thousand, two hundred and four thousand. So. That's actually good news based on the last couple of years of, of tender results. So we have two recommendations. One is for the main contract award. And the second one is for a construction contingency amount.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for Tim on his report? Counselor Ivy?
Just on the streets that we're dealing with here in this, the group of three, Chestnut, Gray, and King. Have those streets already been renewed? Or is it there further out? I wasn't clear when you were talking about, these are because they're not within the five-year plan for roadwork. Is that because, again, they've already been done or are they further out?
Todd might be able to answer in more detail. I, I don't believe that they've had full street renewals. Some of them may have underground services, but certainly the sidewalks are in, in very poor shape for these sections.
So, so Gray and Chestnut, they have been totally reconstructed. Actually, one of my first projects is inspector on, on Chestnut and Gray. So, so that is full, full you done. What new water and sewer in that street back in nineteen ninety six. Gray Street, the water main has been replaced. Sewer is, we did do a condition asset. No major concerns with the sewer. So it's certainly outside our five-year capital for anything on that section of King Street.
Right. And, and so we've saved two hundred thousand on this. So do we have the ability to fit another sidewalk in there? Is that the intent of that or?
So, so I think the issue is, you know, we looked at that. It's just we're getting late in the construction season, you know. So probably not. Contractors are maxed out. This is going to be, you know, a fairly big job for this local contractor. So. We do say have some other sidewalks, not concrete, that will be overlaying with asphalt because they're within kind of our, our five to 10-year capital budget. So we don't want to put brand new concrete down. So we are doing some other sidewalk work other than concrete. So. Plus our street renewals that we've already done, our full, full capital plans like Nesbit Street, you know, new concrete sidewalks. So.
Yeah, that's great for me. You know, the demand for sidewalks and sidewalk remediation is significant. Areas that don't have them, and then areas that do have them, but need to be done like this. So it's appreciated. And thanks for the information.
Counselor Paul Morton?
So just question on the side of the sidewalks. Is it curb weeds sidewalk or is it curves stamped and sidewalk?
So it will be curb, median, and sidewalk.
Medium being stamped or medium being?
Grass median.
Grass for the first year, so it's wheat.
And there's a few sections that have the sidewalk right up to the curb. Gray would be an example of that.
So is it a lot more money to stamp them? So there's no maintenance down the road because they go to weeds, as we all know. And for aesthetics, it would be better looking if it wasn't much more money.
Yeah, it would be more expensive and there would be a little bit of subjectivity to the aesthetic side of it. Some people like the grass and some people like the stamps. The, the stamping is more common in, in the more urban kind of sections. So certainly downtown Hansport has some of that.
Counselor Paul Wheaton?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you, just a question in the difference between the concrete and the asphalt sidewalks. So the concrete is more durable, more long lasting. It's more expensive or what's the comparison to asphalt?
Yes, so concrete is more expensive. I have done life cycle kind of analysis in the past. And over the, the thirty-plus years, the concrete is actually less expensive because it does last at least ten years longer.
Thank you.
Counselor Ivy, did you have a, I saw you, I was just, I was keeping notes, so I didn't want to miss anyone. Okay, and Mayor Zabian?
To manage your motor as well. It's easier to fix.
It's easier to fix patches of concrete as well that may have cracked rather than asphalt. It's a little bit different, correct?
Yeah, you can replace a panel, and it, it doesn't, it's not as noticeable. And it's, yeah, it, it's quicker and easier.
Absolutely. So we have no concerns about having this project completed before, I know you can't predict snowfall, but let's say before Christmas.
So I did talk to a few of the contractors before we went out to bid. And we actually made the closing date next summer. Because the comments back were that it's, it's pretty late in the year to be awarding a project at the end of September. So the hope is that if they have availability, that Sheehy will do the work this fall. But it, it's possible that it could be delayed until next spring.
We're not going to have a situation where the work starts though, and we're not able to complete it. So it's a raw, it's a raw section because it just won't be able to be cleared. Or so we're not going to fall into that situation by also either we start it and finish it, or they just don't start it in.
And that will be part of the management. And we also don't want to pour concrete when the temperatures are too low.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. There are two motions up there. If someone wishes to read them? Mayor Zabian?
Committee Hall recommends council approve the award of tender, WRMP, W twenty-five dash eleven, Windsor sidewalk replacement to Sheehy Construction Limited for the tender price of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-five cents before applicable taxes to be funded through the Canadian Community Building Fund.
Made by Mayor Zabian, is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor Bonnie Smith. So the recommendation is committee of the whole recommends that council approve the award of tender WHRMPW twenty-five dash eleven Windsor sidewalk replacement to Sheehy Construction Limited for the tender price of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-five cents before applicable taxes to be funded through the Canadian Community Building Fund. Show of hands for support. Didn't think you were waving, so motion passed. Second one, Mayor Zabian?
Committee Hall recommends council approve a construction contingency amount of fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents before applicable taxes to be funded through the Canada Community Building Fund.
Made by Mayor Zabian, is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor Bonnie Smith. So committee of the whole recommends that council approve a construction contingency amount of fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents before applicable taxes to be funded through the Canadian Community Building Fund. All those in favor, show of hands. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, everyone. So as I mentioned, it is eight eleven. Is it, we usually break at eight for fifteen minutes. Does council want to break? Show of hand, or everyone shaking their heads? Okay, so we will take a fifteen-minute break, so we'll be back at eight twenty-six. On the dot.
Thank you, Clerk Snare. Welcome back to the Committee of the Whole. So we're going to pick up where we left off on 11H with new business and it's 2025-26 tax rate correction for a 2023-24 tax calculation issue. Counselor Ivey.
Thank you, Chair. So the report was circulated. When I look at grading my reports, it wasn't one of my best ones, but I think the message is still there is that, and I'll try, I'm going to stay a little bit off script and just try and put it, condense it into a nutshell for discussion here is that we spent a lot of time in the most recent budget process going through and A, working on operational costs and capital costs to try and reduce the the weight of the operational tax rate in the budget. And as we worked through that, through probably more meetings than we've had on budget previously, we fundamentally got down to where we got a, what would believe to be an equitable rate, but with an increase in the West Hans region. And when we talked about this and we asked the question a few times, generally the, the answer had to do mostly with contributions to reserves and the difference, distinction that existed between the urban Hansbord Windsor and the rest being West Hans. The purpose of this isn't to re debate the budget, by the way, it's just that our understanding at the time was is that that was generally, you know, what was driving that upward pressure on that rate. And so we worked through that, the budget's been cleared and approved and all that, so well and good, but but then more recently it had been said or commented that the pressure was as a result of a mistake that we had, miscalculation of the budget from two years ago in 23-24 and that that connected to an error with regards to our CMP allocation across the budgets, which is not something that we had talked about within this room. And so I thought it important that we try and get that straightened out. I, I'd identified in my previous council report that, you know, we'd gone a year without using reserves to dampen the impact of a tax increase in the 23-24 year, no use of reserves. And then next year was a million and then this year we started at that level. So I just think it's important that we understand that and whether that's something that we were able to sort out here around the table. And that's why I didn't put a motion in to ask for a report, but that may be the best way is to have a report come back and have it presented to us in a formal fashion that we're just clear on that. So we've got the same message. If it is connected to the calculation error, which I describe in here as a formula that didn't quite work the way you want it, which can happen when you're doing that stuff. Or if it's not, but we just need to be on the same page. And it can't be that we're looking at reserves being the contributing factor of how the, they've been managed from an area and a, and a general rate perspective compared to other areas. And that's why we've got the distinction of the difference. So that's the report. I don't know what, you know, maybe other folks aren't concerned about it. I just think it's important that we have the same information. If it is related to a mistake from, I hate to keep on saying that, but if it is related to that issue from a couple of years ago, then we need to know that because that's a different decision-making process and what you may want to do to deal with it. If it's something that we incurred an expense, we didn't, then we just look to pay it and then deal with it going forward, or whether we keep on dealing with the reserves for the tax rate. So that's the reason for the report. I'm open to questions. What I've said isn't really quite clear, if the report wasn't clear enough, but that's, that's the purpose of having it here.
Thank you, Counselor Ivey. Does anybody have any questions for Counselor Ivey? Seeing no lights, so no.
So, no question. So I guess, does that mean that everybody here understands why we had the increased rate in West Hans? Everybody here is prepared to be able to explain it? Are we all go, because if we're not, then I'm going to put a motion if we're asking the report come back and give us clarity on that, on the lack of use of reserves for one year and then the potential increase for the other two. And just to give us clarity on that, so that we've got something in writing more than the minutes. I went through the minutes, as you can tell, I made references to that in detail, but there should be a pretty clear answer on this.
Counselor Bob Morton, did you, you had your light on?
Oh, thank you, Marshall. I was just going to say, I certainly would like a report to come back, clarify things for me. So I would agree with that part.
Yeah, I'm seeing general nodding heads, so. We're at Committee of the Whole. I can craft a rough motion here, I can bring it back at council, which is going to have to go to anyways and just, I'll get the wording right. So if it's all right with you folks, I'll just put together a short, simple and bring it back at council. Rather than doing a rough one now and not having it communicate exactly to staff what we need them or asking them to do on that. Is that okay?
Okay. It's your wish that you would.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along to I request for curbside waste collection services on private roads, Cozy Crescent and Destination Way request for curbside waste collection services on private roads, Counselor Larry Pinch.
Thank you, Chair. So the, the information is in the report, but just kind of a brief overview. What sets the development of Destination Way and Cozy Crescent apart from the other private road developments within my district is that they have no common waste collection area, which means there are no dumpsters. There are no large compost bins in one particular area that would allow individuals to transport their waste and compost in smaller receptacles to that common waste collection area to be dumped. So the current status is that residents are dragging essentially their large green compost bins as well as waste receptacles because they need to protect their waste at the end of the road while it waits for collection out of their driveways and up the entire development to the end where it meets the New Ross Road. So they are having to do this and have been having to do this on a consistent basis since they, they moved in. That road was built to a standard that was acceptable to GFL to be able to complete personal, you know, driveway collection, individual waste collection. And there was perhaps a misunderstanding that the developer had thought that in doing so, that would mean that the individualized collection would occur in that development because he ensured that all residents there were able to be serviced by the current waste collection trucks or vehicles that service the remaining areas on the New Ross Road and Highway 14 out in our district. Unlike the other associations who have portions of their development roads that could be serviceable with the current equipment, but also portions that are not serviceable with what we currently have. So it has been confirmed with GFL that they could service that development and all residents within that development on an individual waste collection. Reasonings for not, as discussed in the report, for not being able to have a common waste collection area is that there is no land that is available to do so, that is not currently owned by the developer of that area. And he is not willing to have waste collection receptacles at the, the beginning of his development or the mouth of the road for safety concerns, for visibility, for, you know, reduction in, you know, potentially property values. There are a large number of homes within that development that are of a considerable size. And there are many residents in that development who are of an age where transporting receptacles of that size and nature a long distance on a consistent basis is just not reasonable, especially when the seasons change and conditions change and then you are attempting to transport those large compost bins up the road for a walk in icy and snow conditions. So barring no other solution currently that exists for these residents and the fact that they have been mitigating to the best of their efforts, this situation up until this point, as the report outlines, I've received multiple concerns from residents living in, in that area. We've also kind of thrown around previously at council about equitable service delivery. So it might be something that we want to look at larger in the future is that if there are private developments in which the entirety of the development meets the spec standard for their private roads and could be serviced, that that might be something that council could potentially be interested in in the future. But the intent of my report this evening is to find a solution for those residents with their waste collection who are currently living in that development without other options.
Thank you for the report. Any questions for Counselor Larry Pinch on the Mayor Zabian?
A couple of questions, not to my colleague Counselor Pinch, but maybe to staff if I could, Chair. First question to Director Richard, if I could, not to put you on the spot, but what, what would the cost be to service the roads in question, Director Richard? I know you probably can't answer it tonight, but they're not very long roads, whether it's based on kilometer or whether it's.
So you're talking just the two roads?
The two, the two roads in question, yeah.
So we did get a quote from, from GFL. Let's see if I have it here. I was working on water for most of the week, not, not solid waste, but. So based on those two private roads, and to be clear, there is a few more roads in that subdivision besides Destination Way and Cozy Crescent. So the two roads in the recommendation report are $550 per month to service them curbside.
Okay. I'm not sure if this next question is for you or not. Because it's a private road, there's a probability that there could be some damage created with big trucks or not. Would that be a concern going forward or did need to be a different agreement that holds us not liable for any damage based on garbage trucks or pickup or would we, would we work to do that if council was to go down that way or?
So usually it's the agreement between the, the private road association and the hauler. That's why we, you know, we did have certain specifications and, you know, through discussions with GFL that, you know, the road has to have, you know, no, no major rats, it has to have a certain substrate to it. So, and, you know, ice, snow and ice control maintained so they can do that curbside collection. And again, just, you know, I think it'd be prudent, you know, if you approve this motion, there is, you know, the bylaw does state that, you know, no curbside collection on, on private roads. I think everyone's aware of that. So if this did go forward, I think there would need to be, you know, a bylaw change because currently our policy does not allow that. And again, I think you did reference, you know, Counselor Larry Pinch referenced the report, I think that was November, that was presented to council, November 12th. So you know, there is a lot of information in that report too. Not sure if you, you did have time to review it, but just to make you aware that there is a bylaw that's, that's currently on the, on the record.
Right, Chair, if I may have one more question to Acting Director Fugier, if I could, not to put you on the spot either, but maybe a development officer question on the requirement when a private road is being applied for, is there a requirement that states they have to provide an area for waste pickup rather than just along the road or beginning of the road? Because this one's a little bit different from a Chalet Hamlet or Falls Lake, for example. It's a little bit different. It just goes on to New Ross Road, for example, or.
Through you, Chair. So Director Richard is correct that we do have policy and bylaw stating that we won't provide that municipal service. So, and then it will really depend on the development agreement for that specific development on, on where, where we agreed or negotiated that the garbage collection would be located, but they would in newer development agreements be required to show that.
Okay. So this, this one, because I can't recall this, this DA, but if it spoke to it or not, but.
I know when I inquired that there, it was, there was no DA for this particular development.
Okay, good. Counselor Ivey?
Thank you, Chair. So it is part of a bylaw and so, so this would require a rejigging of the bylaw per se, opening up a solid waste bylaw for a change. And I think that's important, to be, to be clear about that. I think when we talked about this previously, we'd had conversations with the fact that, so there's other private roads so that we don't end up doing two roads here and then six months from now we have another one because we'll be opening, and so it really goes within the bylaw. I think that we need to get it crafted or carve out a piece that talks about private roads which A, meet the municipal standard for class, whatever class of road we have there, Todd, and so forth, that it becomes something that, you know, it becomes a little bit bigger than just the two roads. We've got this, and this is sort of where we got a little bit off track, I think, when we started with this a year ago, if I can, thereabouts, was on this detail to figure this part out. So I think it's important that we get this right. I, I've been out there, I drove, I had, hadn't driven it before when it was here previously, but last weekend or the weekend before I drove it in for sure. This is an area where it, it appears that curbside pickup appears to be more appropriate than just having the bins at the end of the road. And not the categories, but the road is good. It's, you know, it's a, it's a well-kept area and that. it just seems like it's an area where you expect to see curbside. They're paying the same taxes everybody else, right? And so we get into an area that is maybe more of a conversation as we open that bylaw. I can tell that Todd wants to respond to that, so.
Yeah. And to be clear, you know, curbside collection is, you know, the preferred method mainly for sorting, for for compliance. You know, bins at the end of Shadow Hamlet next to Chester Road, there's, there's five of them now. We've had multiple issues. So again, in the November report, we identify those pros and cons. But again, it's just, do you want to do piecemeal or do you want to open up? Cause there's a lot of private roads that meet that road standard and it's identified in that report. But there is a cost and I think those costs were identified in that November report too. So, so again, staff's recommendation was to open that up, change the the bylaw and every private road in our municipality that would meet that standard would be applicable for curbside collection. But that does come with a additional cost in the municipality.
So thanks for that. And I think, I don't know that I could get into that detail, but it, they're just dealing with their regular trucks so that we're not, we shouldn't be needing to create a new service here. It should be that if it's to the standard of the road that we have the ability to to do the collection, that it doesn't cost more than what you're quoting there at the 500. I don't know if that's taking into account what they sort of already would pay, even if you just had a bin at the end of the road. And that's where I don't, I don't know enough about this right now here tonight to to speak to that, but it, so what is that added cost for? Because there are, you know, so it's, I think it's better for us to understand that we we pull that report up and go through it would be important.
Yeah, the added cost is, right, there's three streams. So they're going in there, you know, twice, you know, to green carrots, recycling, and then then garbage collection. With the bins, you know, proper sorting doesn't happen. There's some sorting, you know, there are some diligent people that do that. But for the most part, those bins are, you know, the front end load comes in, goes in the back and it goes to landfill. So unsorted material for the most part. So, and again, those costs are broken down in the November report. It actually gives some some options of, you know, if we want to do all private roads that don't actually meet the standard, because it would probably be a smaller truck. But I think that the recommendation was for to do the private roads that meet set minimum specifications for roads for turning radiuses that are maintained in the winter, so on and so forth. There's grades in there and there's wids. So, yeah. It's fairly detailed report. But again, it's up to council if you want to pick, start with two streets. But again, I think it still requires the the bylaw change too.
To do that. Thank you for that, Director. I appreciate it.
Councillor Paul Morton?
So I just gotta make a comment. I couldn't support this way it's written. I mean, there's more than two private roads. Most of us got a minute. I can't say one's unique over the other. Everybody has unique, everybody in this room is unique in their own personal way. There's not a chance I can support two roads, not all the roads. If you're doing for one, you're doing for them all. And now we want, they, the developer wants West Hans to pay for, because he doesn't want to bend it there.
Councillor Larry Pinch?
I was just gonna ask a question through you to Director Richard, if you happen to have the information. Cause the cost part was kind of what I was waiting for, which I think you guys just received after my report went in. The 550 a month, what does it cost them now to pick up that same amount of garbage at the mouth of the road? And those compost bins at the mouth of the road as opposed to, like, what's the cost differential? So it's 550 if they're doing it curbside, but what is it currently?
So we talked, we tried to break it down. So the 550 per month. So we broke that down. How many, you know, properties are in Destination Way and Cozy Crescent? So the cost per household is about $19.64 and this is pre-tax. So this is, you know, be a little bit more if we had it on net tax, because they just gave us the basic number. So that, you know, and then comparing that with other residents, so $19.64 per month per property. We would compare that to overall what the cost is in the Greater West Hans. It's $6 and $36 more per household. So essentially a 47.9% increase. So that gives you, you know, if there is an extra cost to do these two streets, because it's, you know, $550 a month, but it doesn't sound like much, but it does add up once you, once you bring that in and show the, show the increase. So there's more. And then we broke it down to Shalley Hamlet. So curbside collection of Shalley Hamlet for all those residents would be at $19.64. If we did do the same thing, based on that number, we're looking at about $9,000 per month or about $104,000 per year. So again, that's when you start to see the differences, you know, based on $550 a month. You add more in if other people came, because those roads would meet that same standard. It's hard to say no at that point. Once you open the, you know, once you allowed one, how are you going to say no to the others? So I think that's, you know, staff, we need to kind of break that down, be prepared for what, what, what may be coming next. So we, we did a little bit of analysis. We didn't get too deep in and other that, but you know, essentially the cost to service curbside and Destination Way is 47% more than curbside collection for other West Hans residents.
Why?
I think it's just to base, you know, that's their $550 and we allocated that to what the the greater contract is. So.
Okay. I find, I can't logically make sense.
That's what we wrote down, the $550, because again, you know, the $550 per month service to private roads may seem like a good deal, but if you're comparing it with the cost for other residents, it doesn't sound like a great deal. So.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to why the cost is more because, like, if you're stopping at a host on the New Ross Road, why does that host on the New Ross Road cost you less for curbside collection than the hosts across the road in Destination Way?
We just, we just asked for the price to service those two roads and that's what they came with. So, yeah.
Councillor Ivy?
So garbage collection, though, it is general rated?
Yes, yeah, garbage is.
Is that correct? So that's the incremental cost for those two roads, but it wouldn't be allocated to the two roads. It would be spread across the whole service provision. Am I not correct on that? That, so.
Yeah, it's not area rated to those residents, but that's, once we broke it down, what's the extra cost? We just did that, you know, easy calculation and just to see what that extra cost was per household.
Right.
And then we try to attribute that to, you know, other private roads that would meet that standard, just to give us a ballpark. And it was quite similar to those, those prices I just quoted, what was in that November report, because GFL did pro- provide us numbers to do all those private roads that would qualify, they gave us that price too. So that's in the November report.
And that's incremental to what they already pay, but not getting a curbside pickup. Do you know what I'm asking? Like, we're not doing an offset. Like, so let's just say they were already paying in their tax rate, $500 a month. Are we, are we doing the offset with what they're already paying for?
So, so they're paying taxes for solid waste collection based on what our contracted fees are. Excluding the private roads. So if we do private roads, it's an extra expense, because there's many kilometers of private roads that the haulers are going to have to be in. So that's an extra expense on the general tax rate. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's helpful. I think we're gonna need to see a, need to see the modeling and the numbers on this. I, I'm happy to go back down the path and trying to sort this out. I think it's an important thing. Just like the earlier conversations that we had. The one other question I'd add on this, I don't want to muddy the water here at all, but we're gonna open up a solid waste bylaw. I know that there's something in there that we removed from the previous version that I'd like to try and see get back in there. I'll deal with that when we open it, but I just, but that's what we're gonna end up doing is we'll open up the bylaws. It's to do it, if there's anything else, it's best to just deal with it and close it for whatever period of time. And so, but I, yeah, thank you.
Councillor Paul Morton?
Question, Todd. So are the solid wastes, is that per kilometers or per household? How do they charge us for pickup of solid waste?
Again, I really can't comment how they come up their price. I think it's, it's usually per dwelling and then, you know, but the private roads, there's, you know, the dwellings are quite separated. So I don't know how they come up with their price, but you know, they look at the roads, they go in there, they do a survey and they came up with a price for private roads that they don't currently collect curbside. So.
Maybe I said it wrong, but what do we get charged today? Is it by kilometer or is it by households that we're actually paying right now?
I have, sir.
By households, yeah.
Councillor Remy, I saw your light and you're good. Okay. Councillor Larry Pinch?
Sorry, I just have one and maybe it is that we need to see the numbers. So I know that the waste coordinator had told me that it was approximately $12,000 for the associations to pick up their waste per calendar year, their common race collection areas. So of that 12,000, how much of that would be reduced not picking up at the end of Destination Way? Like, that's the part where I'm not getting the 550. So it costs 550, but what does it cost us right now for Destination Way and Cozy Crescent that's gonna come off of that 550 that we're already paying? Or we, maybe we don't know.
So, so for Shalley Hamlet, Falls Lake Resort and Falls Lake West, the tipping fees, because we're paying the tipping fees for the, you know, the containers, that works out and there's 442 units. So it's, it's quite cost effective. It's only $2.23 per household. Right. So it's quite a bit cheaper to have the bulk containers at the end, because again, they just pull up and they dump it and away they go. But again, this is wording from our solid waste coordinator, the sorting is not done properly. So that's going to the landfill, you know, and we could charge tipping fees on top of that. So, you know, there's, it's, our recommendation is curbside because it's, it's better sorting, better compliance, better enforcement. So so the containers at the end of the street are a much less expensive option than curbside collection.
And there's no way that we can require now a development to have containers present for their residents?
So I don't think there's anything. I think there's probably the owner or the developer is, you know, doesn't want those at the end of that lane. But there's nothing prohibiting him from allowing that if he did agree to it. So a fenced in area, you know, some Falls Lake Resort has nice little buildings and it's a nice little area. They keep it quite tidy. So there's, there is, we have many of these cottage country associations that, you know, manage the way they do.
I have attempted with all of those solutions, as I think has the waste coordinator, none of which are agreeable. I just didn't know if there was a way that the municipality could say you, you must provide some, no.
I'm, I'm not sure. I can't comment on that.
Manager Fugier, please.
Okay.
Yeah, I would have to, excuse me, consult with the development officer, but I'm not aware of any requirements in our land use bylaw or subdivision bylaw that would require them to provide that.
Anything further, council? Councillor Ivy?
One last question, if I could, and it was just to your previous response to councillor Paul Morton was was that we've gone to per household. We don't use tonnage as part of the cost arrangement with the provider. Todd, did we switch away from that or am I misremembering how we?
No, it's essentially, we're paying for the collection. So it's per stop. So they just look at stops per household, you know, every time they stop, it's, it's time. So, you know, we pay the tipping fees. So once the garbage or the organics go, we receive that bill either from one of the three streams for that tipping fee. So we, we pay the tipping fees separate from the GFL contract. So.
Okay.
So the, the clock, the collection contract is just essentially for the three streams of collection. So, and all the tipping fees when they cross, we get it to a separate bill for that.
Okay. Thank you. I still think it's worth something trying to figure out. It's, this is complicated. I mean, it's not with all the other private roads, whether they've, where they meet the standard or they don't, it's, we, we seem to kind of get stuck on this.
Councillor Paul Wheaton?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just meaning a comment, like to thank councillor Larry Pinch for bringing this report forward, because I think it should open up a conversation. There are plenty of private roads and I think it was 21 that was shown in your report at a cost of about 250,000. What my fear is, is if we open up the Cozy Crescent and Destination Way, those other 20 are gonna be right behind it. So it's really not a question of the 550. It's more a question of the 250,000. So with that being, you know, on the table, it's something that if we do want to change the bylaw, we're gonna have to change it for them all. So something down the road we could talk about. Thanks.
Perfect. Any no other lights for questions? Councillor Larry Pinch, you did have a recommendation in your report, so I just wanna circle back to you with what you would like to do.
Well, I understand as what councillor Wheaton has just suggested, and I am open for a discussion about private roads that meet the requirements as far as their material and their subbase and all of those other items that Director Richard had just spoke to. Or there's no solution for these residents. So I'm unsure as to what to to do in the sense that they are taxpayers, like the rest of us are taxpayers. I live in a private development. I'm happy because I have a dumpster. I can take, and I have compost bins at a common waste collection area, but they don't. So I don't know what to suggest other than what I've suggested. So I guess I will make my motion and if we want to amend it or there's further discussion, then we can move forwards from there.
Okay. It's up to you what you would like to do.
So it's recommended that committee of the whole to counsel approve the new private road solid waste curbside collection policy and approve the additional annual operational expenses needed to fund the increase in current service level for applicable curbside collection of solid waste collection on private roads that qualify as per the attached policy.
Made by councillor Larry Pinch, the secondor?
Second chair.
Councillor, Mayor Zabian seconds. So any, I will read it. We've discussed it. So council is recommended committee of the whole counsel to approve the new private road solid waste curbside collection policy and approves the additional annual operational expenses needed to fund the increase in current service level for applicable curbside collection of solid waste collection on private roads that qualify as per the attached policy. Councillor Ivy, did you want to add to it?
Well, no, I want, I'm not looking to add to the motion, but I'm gonna say, because now's when we have discussion on the motion itself, right? And so, but we don't have the financials here with this to be able to analyze what this, what the implications are of this. And so, you know, I kind of took a breath before we got to reading the motion, but my my sense of it is, I'm not sure what's gonna happen with this motion in this room. And, and in the interest of keeping the potential to have this, this discussion alive, I I'd look to say that we get the financial numbers and that information in front of us first, that we have a better sense as to what we're dealing with, whether it's because right now it's, we're looking at purely a policy, whether we're gonna deliver for private roads. And, and for that reason, I I'd rather see the other information coming back. I'd want to know what, how, how can we carve this? That it works and satisfy the needs of private roads that fit the. So, and for that, like, you know, I, I'd like for us to be able to see that folks that, you know, have beautiful communities like, you know, like those to have curbside collection, because it's, it's meant to be there. But I'm concerned about the other impacts if it, if it grows out beyond that. And so I, I'd hate to see this go out and and fail. And then we're locked out for another 12 months before we can really have anything else coming forward. If I'm understanding the way everything works here properly. So what it's worth, that's my comments.
Councillor John Smith?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I can completely concur. I need more information. It's a lot, it's a much wider topic and there, there are private roads throughout the municipality. So without more information, I'd, I would rather not vote on this at all. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Bob Martin?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Same kind of, same kind of stream as the other two. I, I think it's a big conversation. If this fails tonight, it can't come back for quite some time. So I think more information for sure. Once it fails, it's gone for, I don't know how long, but we can't talk about it for a while.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Deputy. Myself, I get a little, I'd like to look at the report from back in November. I remember it briefly. I want to support it, but I just need more information on it, just with the financials. So I hate to see it not make it tonight. So.
Mayor Zabian?
Yeah, Chair, I see it a little bit differently, to be honest with you, Chair. The report back in November was quite detailed. It was attached to here. I went through that again. Knowing the, the roads in question and the multiple residents who have reached out over and over again, over more than a couple of months, I'll say, I'll just keep it at a couple of months, right? This point, because I can't give you the exact details of how many months it's been. But this situation is a little bit different. They, they, other private roads, they have a, a, a spot where everything is put. Others do not. This is one of those situations that they just don't have an alternative. They gotta trek it up. Whatever it is up the, up the road. Whatever it is up the, up the road, uh, I know when I look at my road, when it was a, a dead end road, it's not, no longer and trucks go up there, but, uh, mine is very similar and I don't, I think I would have a hard time trekking my green bin up that road as a somewhat pretty strong mid-aged man, but, uh, quote unquote, but, but I just see it a little bit differently. Uh, I don't, I, if, you know, if this doesn't pass tonight, it's only committee of the whole. So it can be brought back in two weeks' time, for example, and it's so, it's so specific to, to individual roads that the whole conversation of private road collection and the private or the solid waste bylaw, these are different topics that can be reopened by council at any time. Just, just, just to address the comments that are made. If it can't come back within six months, et cetera, it absolutely can. And, uh, it can come back in various, multiple different ways and, uh, and have conversations on, on worth a bigger things. But, uh, um, I definitely support it myself. I just, I, I think it's very unique and, and that's the reason why.
Any other questions? Seeing none, there is a motion. I will reread it before we go to vote. So we're all in the same clear. It is recommended for committee of the whole recommend that council approves private road curbsides solid waste collection and approves the additional annual operational expenses needed to fund the increase in current service level for applicable curbside collection of solid waste collection for Cozy Crescent and Destination Way in Vaughn Hans County. All those in favor? One, two, three, four? All those opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So a motion does not pass. Oops. Yeah, I did. Four and eight. I just can't add myself in. Can't get beyond the seven.
Yes.
Nays? Okay. And I'll go through Counselor Paul Morton, John, Counselor John Smith, Counselor Bonnie Smith, Counselor Jim Ivy, Counselor Paul Wheaton, Counselor Scott McLean, Counselor Yonish and Deputy Mayor Francis. You're welcome. Sorry about that. Okay. So that brings us to the end of new business. So public comment period, we have no one in the public. So we will skip on by. So our next, um, is in camera. So I do need a motion to go in camera. Made by Counselor Bob Morton, seconded by Counselor Paul Wheaton. All those in favor? Show of hands. Motion carried. So we'll give Clerk Snare an opportunity and thank you everyone for watching this evening. We may be back. We may not be, um, probably not. If not, our next meeting date is Thursday, September 12th. Council briefly, special council meeting, and then we'll be back for 11th. It's the 11th, sorry, September 11th, which is Thursday. And then we'll be back for regular council on September 23rd. So have a good night. If we don't see you again.